I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, our country, its lands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the second full house in a month, huh? It's positive news? So, the first thing on our agenda tonight is, we have some residents of Old County Road in Southampton, who have some concerns over a proposal for a development in Westfield that's adjacent to Old County Road. The trust for this property has proposed utilizing Old County Road as the sole ingress and egress for the new Westfield inhabitants in this development. Old County Road is almost entirely in Southampton, is a dead end street. There are parts that wind and parts that go up hills, and at some point, it's only about thirteen feet wide. The residents of Old County Road have petitioned to come before this board this evening to speak regarding their concerns of the proposed development and its proposed usage of Old County Road. And if I'm correct, Mrs. Lorna Shire is...
I was the one who spoke to your town administrator, asking that we be heard. I've been reading what we were handed as we came in the door, and there is one error on this. We are not opposing the development of that property. That is their property to do what they wish with. What we are opposing is opening up a very small and dangerous to the general public street. Residents of the street are very much aware of the ups and downs and the lined corners on this little street. We just had about eighteen months of construction traffic for the last two lots on the street. They put up some very nice houses. The problem we foresee is, if this is the sole access road, that means any emergency vehicles for Westfield, who will need to attend Westfield taxpayers, would have to use this very small, winding, and dangerous for people who don't know the road. They would have things like snowplows, fire trucks, ambulances, school buses. Our question is, wouldn't it be a better thing to put a road out to either Route 10 or 202? Something that did not endanger both residents and people using the road? And this is what we are bringing before you tonight. Not saying we don't want to develop, that's not correct.
So, right now, there's no other, it's just that one road to get to this development. There's no other access road anywhere?
May I add to it?
Correct.
Was the access road in the city of Westfield leading right to this property? And somehow, they gave up the right of a public way to it.
So...
The city of Westfield.
Is that road still there?
Yeah, the road is still there. They've actually extended it into a track rock road.
Exactly.
But now, they claim that the first floor of the road, which is probably six hundred yards, or seven or eight hundred thousand yards, is now private.
Right.
It doesn't make any sense.
I can say that I live on Seven Old County Road. I speak for Robert Argwell. We're actually selling our home, and I'm here. It's not a very... We come, you guys come up this hill, and it's literally one lane. One lane. And I can't tell you how many times little girls are on the road, tricycles, or dogs. People are walking their cats. It's just not good. And in the winter, literally, it's one lane. One lane. And yes, I understand, Connaughtstown, Hampton has a certain right of way to the front and the back. But I'm just saying, it is literally not a good area.
Can I just interject for one second? Before anyone else speaks, would you mind stating your name and address, just so I am aware of who...
I said Seven Old County Road.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
And I'll tell you, for each, I'm taking twenty-one Old County.
Thank you, sir.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
So, it is a very dangerous area.
Yes, sir.
Phil Champagne, Fifteen Old County Road. I've lived out here since nineteen seventy-five, built a home up here. They plowed the road now, last year, with the town pickup truck. Their road, when, during the winter, you cannot get to Carter's now. You have to go into someone else's driveway to get through there. This road was just recently paved, like in two thousand one or two thousand two?
Two thousand four. Because I moved in in two thousand four, and they built it and paved it right in two thousand four.
Okay.
This is, the road is at the widest fifteen feet. Well, actually fifteen feet four inches is Long Pond Road. Down the bottom of the hill, down the bottom of the hill, from Old County Road, is Old Long Pond Road that comes in off of Middle Road and comes right in directly into that property. There was some sort of land court deal, and I don't know what the focus was that went on. But all of a sudden, that old Long Pond Road is no longer a road. It's a private driveway for the five people that live on the boundary. Nineteen fifty-five, the city of Westfield came down and rebuilt that old road after the hurricane. The towns don't go in and rebuild the prior roads. So, how can they all of a sudden go, oops, it's private? It's a private road. We're not complaining about the development. We know there's going to be houses, that's progress, the whole deal. But let them get there the right way. As far as I'm concerned, the right way, what everybody else sees, that's up to them. But that old Long Pond Road is the road that makes sense moving, it goes right to it.
Including maintaining this old county road that they're proposing to use is everything to do with Southampton and nothing to do with Westfield.
And I have to say, someone visited from the town the other day, saw that we were selling our property, and said, "Well, you really don't care." I go, "No, I do care." Take a drive along this area where the two new houses were built, and it's a very sharp corner. So sharp that, can you imagine twelve houses times two, twenty-four cars?
Ones or more?
Maybe, maybe, you know, children that have vehicles? That it's very dangerous. And he said, "But why do you care?" I go, "I care because I care about our neighborhood. I may be leaving, but I care. I care."
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My concern is, in part, is not only with the width of the road, but how is Westfield going to get there with their emergency equipment? Fire, police, ambulance? How's the, where are the kids going to go to catch the school bus? Do they walk up to the end of Old County Road? Does the school bus come down to this new development? So on and so forth. If they had the road in Westfield, they could drive in, turn their school bus around at Culbessac, and drive back out. But right as it is now, the kids would be walking on a private way, and if one of them gets hit by a car from the private way, who's liable? So on, there's a whole bunch of things to think about that I don't think anybody has given any consideration to when they close that road down. Whatever, for life, I can't even imagine why they're closing it.
Captain of Naido County Road. My concern is much like theirs. But when we were at the planning board meeting in Westfield, or whatever night it was, the presentation very clearly said that they were going to use Old Long Pond Road as the access. Nothing was ever mentioned about Old County Road. The mention of Old County Road came in the letter to the Butters, notifying everyone, or notifying the Butters, that Old Long Pond Road was not going to be used, that it was Old County Road. So, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of kind of, you know, whatever. We just need to be very clear as to what is the truth and what isn't? What is actually going to be happening? I mean, Westfield had no clue what was going on, to be very honest. Nor, and they agreed that they had never spoken to you and that this might be an issue, so...
And then, page three, you have, "It may be necessary, it may be necessary to approve Old County as South Hampton taxpayers."
Just given to us tonight as information.
So, this is the first time?
You've seen that?
Yes, sir.
Ross Shire, Four Old County Road. Paragraph two of this information was written by the gentleman at the door. At the end of the paragraph, it said, "The traffic will likely be generated by only eleven new lots." And I, for the life of me, can't think where there are eleven lots on Old County Road. There may be eleven lots on Westfield. Old, Old Lake Road or Old...
Old Long Pond.
What, Long Pond, I remember.
When you're old, you forget. If those are the eleven lots, the gentleman who drew the supplement, I neglected to put in which town those lots were in. The last sentence in the second paragraph. And I believe he also refers to it later. And I'm here to, I also move forward. Thank you very much.
Before I direct any questions to Mr. Phil in the front, are there any other concerns from the residents of the road or Southampton that they would like to voice right now?
Yeah, how did the old Long Pond Road get to be closed into a private road? I'd like to address that.
I don't have the answer to that question, but...
And it was the problem.
He might.
He was available for all that stuff.
Mr. Phil?
It reminds me of two old maxims. One is the old carpenter's maxim, "When all else fails, reach the directions." And with respect to the documents I've handed out tonight, if we had known sooner that folks were coming to see you tonight, we certainly would have gotten this out. And if we had their names and addresses, which is one of what US people give that, we certainly would have gotten this stuff out sooner. With respect to what is the path here, what we did, okay, was we filed the lawsuit in the land court, and some of the documentation to support that is in what I've given you, arguing that Old Long Pond Road was a public road. Okay? We had the layout, we had a survey showing that that layout in eighteen sixteen apparently ran all the way from Middle Road to Route 10. And I can't believe if somebody really, I thought somebody suggested, I'm hoping I heard wrong, why didn't you go out to Route 10? In other words, what you can see from the eighteen sixty old map is apparently before the Civil War, Old County Road was part of a thoroughfare. And if, for example, these folks are upset about eleven houses, which by the way, on page one, I do state, and I realize folks didn't have much time to read it, on the Westfield side of the Southampton Town Line, that's the proposed new subdivision. The choice is not the status quo or eleven new lots at the end of Old County Road on the Westfield side. The choice is either eleven lots, or send us and the city of Westfield back to the land court, where if we're going to prove that Old Long Pond Road is a public way, and by the way, at the top of the next of the last page, page six, part of the settlement agreement, it says, "Except for emergency access and egress." In other words, Westfield would get to and from this subdivision on Old Long Pond Road. And that was part of the compromise that was reached, okay? The idea was that Old County Road, which as I understand it is an existing public way, would be the regular traffic to and from the houses. And I can understand people want to know how the emergency vehicles are going to get there. They're going to get there through Old Long Pond Road, so there'll be some division of traffic, okay? And the answer to what seems to be the sixty-four dollar question, which I point out in here, is part of the settlement is, if this proposal flies, we go back to the land court and we ask the land court, because us and the city of Westfield and the Old Long Pond Road folks agree that it's not a public road. In other words, in terms of what's potentially going to be off of Old County Road, these eleven houses are it. We don't want to be forced back to the land court and try to turn Old County Road into a thoroughfare that runs all the way between Middle Road and Route 10. And with respect to the potential for Southampton being put in a bind about approving it, that's the whole rub, okay? In that if the court says, if this subdivision is torpedoed and we have to go back, and the court says it's a public road, then basically, these eleven houses will get built instead of a definitive subdivision plan on what's called an approval not required plan. That's what precipitated the land court lawsuit, by the way, was an A and R claim, where there's no subdivision control at all. And what that means is, as I know, all that road frontage from the end of this potential subdivision, right out to, have I got my geography state? It's Route 10 on the west side, I believe, is going to be open. And those landowners, I suspect, if they realize, oh my God, we've got a public road, let's build the road, and now instead of farmland with no public road access, we've got house lots? That's why what I'm projecting is, there could be houses all the way along there, both on the Southampton and on the Westfield side of the road. And that's certainly not what the trust folks want. We just want to put eleven houses on their way. And that's why what they're suggesting, and it's why Westfield was willing to enter into this agreement that's stacked onto the end here, so we wanted to make it a public record, is, okay, we'll have emergency access on Old Long Pond Road. Regular traffic on Old County Road. And these eleven houses will be hit, and then we'll walk away with a court judgment where everybody involved is agreeing, it's not a public road. Okay? It is part of a compromise deal that we're trying to implement.
So, I have a lot of questions, a lot of questions, because what you're saying to me does not make, I mean, it makes sense, but it really doesn't make any sense. So, I want, first, I want to know about the kids on the bus. Where are they going to get picked up?
Have you ever...
Wait, wait, whoa, 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 just hang on, hold on. Just relax. Where are the kids going to get picked up? That live in those houses?
That's an issue that would have to be dealt with. Probably...
So, we need to figure that out.
One thing I want to say, I sat here, I did not interrupt anybody, I didn't laugh, I didn't make guttural noises, and that's pretty basic courtesy in a public meeting.
And everyone will be...
The answer is, my best guess would be at the existing end of Old Long Pond, I'm sorry, Old County Road. Because in my experience, when you have a private subdivision road, which is what would be the T, where these houses would have their frontage, often a school bus, and it varies from town to town, but the school bus will go to the end of the public road. So, the kids would come to the very end of Old Long Pond Road. That would be my best guess at this point. And that's where they would get their...
So, all of those people are going to use that road? So, they get to just use Southampton land at really no cost to the town? Is Westfield going to plow that road? Are they going to help maintain that road? Is there any way to figure that part out? Because I don't think that Southampton should have to pick up the entire tab for that.
And that would be an issue between Westfield and Southampton. The issue for Southampton is, if this subdivision is killed, and we go back to the land court, and the land court says that Old Long Pond Road is, I'm sorry, Old County Road is the beginning of a thoroughfare that runs all the way between Middle Road and Route 10, which means there's going to be through traffic. There are going to be dozens and dozens and dozens of houses.
When...
And so, what I'm suggesting is, the choice for Southampton is, I don't think it's going to amount, hopefully, to that much, for eleven more houses. Turning that into a thoroughfare, where it cuts all the way through as a public road, is, I respectfully submit, going to leave Southampton in a much worse position. See, I think that the choice to face to Southampton, like the other folks, is not eleven houses for status quo, eleven houses, or send us back to the land court and risk having that turned into a public way thoroughfare that would include Old County Road.
When you had this meeting with the town of Westfield, and I assume some people from Old County Road went?
And nobody told the planning board, the Westfield city solicitor and I had long thought, nobody told the Westfield planning board about the stuff you get before you tonight. And that was all of our screw up, okay? Basically, the information that I put before you tonight, the Westfield assistant city solicitor is in the process of putting that before the planning board, so they know what's going on. And that was a major screw up on everybody's part. Nobody told the planning board anything about any of this.
So, wouldn't it make sense to give them our concerns and then revisit this again?
Sure. I realize you don't have time to do it tonight. Yeah, for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. My understanding was that it was Old Long Pond Road that was the original road on the Westfield map that went from Middle Road in Westfield to Route 10 in Westfield, not through Southampton. That was my understanding when we first bought into and built our house on Old County. That originally, this old stagecoach road was Old Long Pond Road.
Old Long Pond Road, went from Middle Road down the bottom of the hill, went up over Old Long Pond Road, followed through the field, and went up through the woods. It was, it's a stagecoach trail. And the layman's house is, used to be an old stagecoach guy. There is a tree near Ray's house that was there in a revolutionary war. That road was the Old County Road. Old, was Long Pond Road. Old County Road was not an accepted road at all. It was an access road to the fields in the back, up until like nineteen fifty-five, fifty-eight, something like that. And you can tell you when this, the old, old, the Old County Road was accepted. And as far as going back to land court and not accepting Old County Road, what difference does it make? Nobody's going to make a road through the woods out there to go up to Route 10. All we want them to do is use Old County Road from Middle Road up to the new housing. It's ridiculous to think that they should use Old County Road to do this, when Old Long Pond Road is there. If he wants to use scare tactics by everybody going to build houses all over the place, if we put a road through the woods up to Route 10, then by all means, let them guys go ahead and do that. And this faux pas with them not showing us to the planning board in Westfield? Well, shame on them. I mean, how many more faux pas are we going to have to live with from these guys? And we have to come to meetings time after time after time to dispute what they're saying?
And why do you get it done tonight?
Right.
Matter of fact, one of the Butters was not even know anything about the Westfield meetings.
I've just got a basic question. This, it went to land court originally because the LLP here couldn't build the houses on there because it was landlocked, basically? And Westfield didn't want to improve any roads? Is that basically it?
The city of Westfield came right out and said, "Y'all can stuff it. We're not going to deal with the public road issue. We're not going to approve an A and R plan on the gravel road." Okay? I think what they've now seen, and originally, we thought it was a county highway, that turned out to be wrong. Okay? And what you can see at the bottom of page three, it's exactly correct that the town way goes all the way straight between Middle Road and Route 10. But, nobody disputes, so far as I know, that Old County Road is a public way that runs right into that road. So, what you're going to have is the southbound traffic that's going to go from Middle Road over to Route 10 is going to use Old County Road. Why would they go all the way down via Long Pond Road? And the second thing, the eastbound traffic coming from Route 10 is going to use it as a cutoff if they're going to go north on Middle Road. And one key thing I want to, I want to focus on, if somebody's saying, "Nobody's going to build that road," then they not clear on what building lots in this area are worth, okay? And if you're, and if you're talking about a public road, which the landowner, who owns the fee under the road, can build themselves, which is part of why there's gravel down Old Long Pond Road. They said there's no access, so we said, "Fine, we'll build it." To, you know, as a dirt public road, doesn't have to meet subdivision standards. And now, we'll sign off on our A and R plan. And I can't imagine that once each and every successive landowner discovers that instead of farmland or woodland, they've got building lots worth, I don't know, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars? That isn't going to more than support the cost of building the road out to Route 10. And in terms of scare tactics, I'm trying to level with people about the situation that we are in and what our options are.
It seems like Westfield's gaining a lot of tax base and everything, and we're going to take the cost to improve the road, have access for the Westfield school buses, and all that in there. I'm trying to figure out what's in it for Southampton, with such a bad budget right now that we'd want to go ahead...
Westfield isn't gaining, and I can tell you that...
They're getting the tax base.
Because, well...
And we would love the tax base.
Okay. Do you, again, I'm not laughing when somebody else is talking. Thank you, sir. My experience, I managed to be in planning, is that by the time you have even one kid, maybe more, in school, and then you have any other municipal services, residential housing doesn't gain anything, okay? That's the reason Chutes Berry, where I live in Amherst, have twenty-dollar tax rates. Hadley, which has Route 9, has an eleven-dollar tax rate, a brand-new school. The residential development, and I can certainly tell you, if Westfield thought residential development was a good thing for them, they wouldn't have spent the money they've already spent. And I think it's probably safe to say, if they didn't think that the town layout we've got and the legal authority I put in here gave us a pretty good chance, I've never seen the city of Westfield back down, you know, as a matter of habit unless they thought somebody else had a real good case.
I don't know. I mean, the mill rate that you're, Hadley and Amherst, I mean, it really doesn't matter. It's what the houses are valued at, and Amherst is way up here.
All I'm suggesting is, is that residential housing, because of the potential for kids in the school, doesn't generally help the tax base. It's commercial and industrial property that fosters your tax base, because they don't have the demands on service.
I guess I would want to add to that comment. I mean, there would be a lot of money that goes into the road, right?
We've dealt on issues, Mr. Phil, with you, and I've dealt with you against you in several things over the last thirty years. You've been in this room here and town hall debating for whoever you work for. And I've worked against you and for you, or with you. But this particular time, I have a lot of questions. I spent thirty years as highway superintendent in this town, and I just retired in January, okay? What these people are, they're giving you a lot of the facts that are absolutely true. Old County Road was Old Stagecoach Road, which went from Middle Road to King's Highway, which is currently College Highway, which is now Route 10. Before that, it was, after that, it was called Red Ledge Road, okay? And it went through the same path, maybe deviated a little bit. And then, there was another name called Opaluka Road. I don't know if any of you guys ever used that name, but it was called Opaluka Road. And then, I would say...
Sorry to laugh, but how old of a member are you, Joe Paluka?
Yeah. And I think in the last twenty-five years, it became Old County Road.
Okay.
Okay? And the other thing too is, at the end of the Southampton section, it stops at the county line. Hampden is just on the other side of that boulder that's marked up, I think, with orange or red paint. That's the county line. That's another jurisdiction, which had authority in years past. My concern is, now, I give you the history. My concern is, you want to open up and develop Long Pond Road as an emergency access. And you're saying it's only eleven houses that will be affected. What about all the houses off of Long Pond Road that are existing houses? They want to use that for a bypass to get to East Street, say, to get to Oyo, or get to North Hampton? They're not eleven houses. I don't know how many houses down there, but there's a lot of houses, am I right?
On Old Long Pond Road, no.
Off, where they can get to Old Long Pond Road. There's a whole division of homes back there on the other side of Statler's Package Store. That's in Westfield. They're going to use that.
Not on Old Long Pond. You mean it becomes a cut through.
They can have access to Long Pond Road.
Are you talking about if it becomes a cut through all the way through?
If it becomes your emergency road you just talked about. They can have access to it.
It only goes to a dead end for eleven houses. That's what we're talking about.
No, once you open that up for emergency vehicles, because that's what you said, am I right?
They're allowed to put a fence in there someplace.
Old Long Pond Road.
Well, who's going to have the key?
I have no idea.
From what I understand, that's illegal.
There's a fire.
No, it's not. There's a gate going up on top of it. And by the way, there's one that's supposed to...
No, 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 he's talking to me. I'm not, I'm talking to you.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I know it's hard if people get worked up. It seems to me, because I don't, I can't imagine, we're going to answer all the questions, and that you haven't had time to think of all the questions. What we need to do is basically, you all need to try to see, what are all your questions or concerns? And then, we need to try to see what can be done to address those questions and concerns.
I understand you. I didn't interrupt you. We're getting off what I want to talk about. You talked about what you want to talk... You talked about what you wanna talk about. I wanna talk about something.
I'll try to shut up and listen.
No, you just, you can interrupt anytime to verify what I'm talking about. But my concern is now, you're gonna have that subdivision, whether it's eleven houses or twenty houses. And I know how houses grow upon subdivisions. But, if there's an agreement in Westfield where there was only eleven houses, they can prevent any kind of new growth out there. Because we've done it in South, in Southampton with various subdivisions.
That's the whole idea of this.
Okay.
Eleven houses are it.
Yeah, but if you have your cake and eat it. I'm talking about, we want, say, in this whole operation, and for Southampton to allow and to let that kind of traffic come down Old County Road is a total injustice to the people that could get potentially hurt. All right? We know there's issues up there. There's a ninety-degree turn in the road that's paved, all right? And in your statement, you basically are refusing to improve that street if it does go through. So I'm saying that's off the table. But I beg to differ with you in the long run because everything is a compromise here.
I agree.
Okay? And, uh, that street is a lot of rock. That hump at the bottom is all rock. It'll have to be blasted, okay? Um, the street has to be widened. It's only two rods long because it was always intended to be a dirt road, okay? It's not three rods, the standard width of a, um, I think it's twenty-eight feet. It's three rods. But it's not a three-rod road. It's a two-rod road. You haven't even looked into what the improvements of Southampton would require for us to be on board with this. Even if we are, I still would be opposed to it as an individual and somebody who's had the history of working on that road many years and getting calls from Phil Pan, Campaign at three, uh, Phil Champagne at three o'clock in the morning because his wife's a nurse and she's gotta get out to the hospital. And I have no problem with that. But, what you're now, uh, saying is that we're gonna share the whole lying cost of that eleven-house subdivision in there at our expense with nothing coming back. And I agree with you that when residential houses come in with school bills and everything attached to it, it's a negative gain. You don't gain anything. We just went through that and we know that. And, uh, but I'm opposed to using that road in this condition, but I would prefer Long Pond Road be developed all the way through the middle, middle, and that traffic has its own route, and Westfield will be responsible for their subdivision, and we wouldn't have to be. Because I don't think our highway department in the middle of a storm is gonna drop everything they can do because somebody's in Westfield wants to get out. And for them to get down there, Southampton's gotta do their business first. But the sad thing about it, there's three or four major routes that's gotta be cleared up before they get to Old County Road. And if I'm wrong, Randall, speak up.
Nope, you're correct.
So my concern is, I don't know how and why you're dumping this whole responsibility on Southampton for your people to get out to Middle Road when you can resolve it by going down Long Pond and spend the money to build that street and get the approvals from Westfield. That's my comment.
I appreciate your concern.
I'm not looking for claps. I'm just telling you the facts of the nightmare where it's going to be.
And what I, what I wanna.
I have one question. Have you driven down Old County?
We gotta go through her.
One, one minute. Go ahead and finish.
I'm just telling you that, that road is, is not conducive for two more houses in the current condition, all right? It's very narrow. There's an awful lot of canopy of it from the trees. There's trees right on the edge of the pavement. There's a lot of work on that road that's gonna be done. So people, when you started adding this kind, you're doubling the amount of traffic on that street with just those eleven houses. This is about eleven houses here now, if I'm not mistaken, or ten.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So you're gonna double the traffic. And then you're gonna probably, the school department in both towns are gonna wanna use it. Unless, I highly doubt Southampton's gonna pick up Westfield's kids.
Can I, can I spend about thirty seconds for funding?
Yep.
Okay. First of all, I wanna thank you for being so forthright and so, and so detailed. Because what you've done is you've laid out specific concerns and specific problems that need to be dealt with, okay? And while I don't have answers here tonight, the first step towards finding answers is learning what the questions and what the concerns are. And that's why, um, I hope that if other members of the select board have questions and concerns, that we will hear about. And hopefully, most of the folks who've come here, um, have my name and address. And I appreciate not having people bend my ear with phone calls. What I appreciate is, my email address is mpill@verizon.net. M-P-I-L-L at Verizon dot net. M is in Mary P is in Peter I-L-L at Verizon dot net. If you wanna send me a letter, the fax is on the letter bit. If any of the, um, Old County Road folks wanna send me emails, what I can then do is take what you've told us tonight, anything else that comes from the selectmen, and any questions and concerns from the Old County Road residents, and then we can sit down and ask ourselves, does this look, number one, is it soluble? And number two, if so, how can we solve it? And if the answer to the question is no, then we'll have to take it from there. If the answer to the question is yes, then I understand that we will need to come back with some specific questions, or not specific questions, specific answers about what are we prepared to do to address the questions and concerns that you've started raising. I'm not sure if I can get any farther tonight.
The only thing I'm gonna ask you is, any correspondence of meetings, hearings, court dates, or anything that's gonna affect this stretch of road in Southampton and its citizens, we need to be notified through our administrator so she can at least make us aware of it so we can attend these meetings.
Understood. And if, well, I guess my, my email address is on the video. Um, if you could send me an email, mpill@verizon.net with your contact information, please, then what I'll do is I'll make sure that request gets honored. And by the way, the person who's concerned because they didn't get included, there was no legal obligation to notify anybody about that Westfield preliminary plan meeting. We did that on our own because we wanted the Old County Road folks to know what was going on and to have the opportunity to come to the Westfield Planning Board and voice their concerns. If we omitted anybody, I am very sorry that that happened, but I can promise whoever sends me a fax or an email will make sure that they get included also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before I take anyone else from the audience on this topic, I would just urge that whatever you are going to bring to the table at this point is new or a new question so that we don't continue to argue over the same issues.
Or they can send me emails.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it's to Mr. Pill.
Okay.
He might wanna take a drive on Old County Road.
I've done that plenty of times, in all, in all seasons.
I live up and over the hill on the first driveway. That's all.
Good thing. The Westfield Planning Board rejected their proposal last week with not enough information. But if you take the drive down Old County Road, look at where the snowfall blocked that two-hundred-year-old oak tree. And I'm sure the driver is.
Right, I've been blaming you all these years.
And you took off, and you took off the side of the clay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pill, for being so generous with your future use of your email. But I guess the question is, is that, uh, up of Old Long Pond Road, uh, last, probably a year ago, year and a half ago, somebody built a whole brand-new road out into that field? And there was a whole big discussion with the city of Westfield. And I think that was the impetus, and I may be wrong, and I may be right. I'm not quite sure. I think that was the impetus for the land court deal going into Boston, was that road was put in there and wasn't supposed to be. It was, and, and Old Long Pond Road essentially ended right there at that field. So they could have used that access there then. I don't understand why we're having this whole big deal. At the time before the land court deal, as far as I understood, Old Long Pond Road was not a private road. I don't know how it, how they magically changed from one to the other in a year.
Let me ask you this, just a question I have for you. Do you know that they rescinded that ownership, the city of Westfield?
No.
Because it needs a city council vote, am I right?
It would, it would need a city council vote. And then everybody who has land along that road would be in a position to say, you just took away our public road. Now we're gonna sue ya.
Correct.
For the value of those.
But that has not been done.
No.
So that road is still a public way?
We say it is. The city of Westfield says it isn't. We built the road out through our land as part of the argument of saying it's a public road. Now we've made it accessible. Now sign off on our A and R.
And I, I'm not professing to know the history of Westfield, but if they're governed by the same bylaws we are for accepting roads and approving roads, they have, their legislative body has, has to approve that discontinuance, if I'm not mistaken. And there should be, there should be history to that discontinuance with a vote of either the board or the town.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There isn't.
Okay.
That's why what we were saying was, rather than fight over the eighteen-sixteen layout, we were prepared to go back to the court and ask the court to adjudicate that it wasn't a public way.
They still would have to have a vote of the, um, town to do that.
Not if the court says so. We can record the court judgment, but, see, that was part of the.
But it seems to me that somebody's trying to circumnavigate the use of that road for those eleven houses, which was the original intent, am I right?
That was the original intent of our lawsuit. And that was the compromise that was scratched out with a mediator and is reflected into the settlement agreement. And I have no problem.
And I don't want this to be a, a negative thing, but it's gonna come out negative. Shame on you guys for not notifying us that you're putting that burden on us without referencing.
With the benefit of hindsight?
Yeah.
You're right.
And shame on you guys.
Yeah, I accept that. With the benefit of hindsight, should've done that before this.
Was that new trap rock road done under permit?
Absolutely not. And the reason, and, you know, if somebody wants to get into one of the sub-battles we ended up fighting throughout the land court case, I can do that. Most public ways, the fee or the, the, the land is actually owned by a budding landowners. And so our position was, number one, it's a public road. Number two, it's our land. We can build the road to make it accessible, so the Westfield Planning Board would have to approve an A and R plan. And the city of Westfield, city solicitor, uh, claimed he was sicking the cops on us. Um, we were daring him to file criminal charges. I mean, that was a great soap opera that I could get into with anybody. You know, if there was one needs to hear.
I think we can go on and on. There are some, there are some issues that need to be hashed out. There are obviously some questions that need to be answered. Before we move on, I'd just like to hear from Randall, who's sitting patiently in the back of the room.
President, how are we presented? Um, I drafted a letter. I, I found out about this last week and didn't have all the information, but I drafted a letter to you guys. It basically echoes a lot of the same concerns that the residents have, so it's not really any bigger. I just wanted to make sure it was addressed.
Thank you. So I think the concerns of the residents have been heard loud and clear. I think we have a lot of questions that need to be answered and, um, we can start to have them investigated.
Will we be notified that the meetings that are, that we had on this, so we can go in and hear?
Well, I don't think they're required to give you notification. But if all your emails and all your addresses are here, we'll make sure you're notified to the best of our ability.
Excellent. But I don't have any at the moment other than Lorna's phone number, so if we wanna use, if we wanna use Lorna as the point person, perhaps that might be a way.
The letter I gave you, which was our letter of interest, has everyone's names and addresses on it.
And I don't, I don't have that letter. If, if it's convenient for the administrator to scan that letter and he comes to me, then I've got that information. It would be helpful.
So we will make sure everyone stays in the loop and move forward from there. Oh. Chief Forkman, did you have any additional comments or you all?
Um, no, I mean, just, you know, there are concerns just with getting emergency vehicles down a road that's some standard that we're gonna have anyway. Certainly, I would hope that, that they sort of give us subdivision back there, that they might do some, you know, engineering as to whether that road's gonna handle emergency traffic.
That's why that would go down Old Long Pond.
Yeah, I can tell you where that ninety-degree turn is to go halfway through. You don't have the radius to turn your big trucks.
Well, that is a problem. And certainly, if there's a fire, we're gonna get to it. But it's a challenge on that road.
And that's, that's the reason why Old Long Pond Road, part of the agreement we have with Westfield was Old Long Pond Road.
Yeah, we have thirteen houses there we need to take care of.
But you gotta take care of those now.
Oh, we are, yeah.
And I guess one possibility is, if Southampton can't make that turn, then maybe this would be an alternate way for Southampton emergency vehicles to get down to that bottom.
That's not gonna seal the deal.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
John, did you have one question?
Just a quick question. Uh, if the road was extended and they built the eleven houses, the only access for Westfield plowing and service and all that would be over Southampton, correct?
No, they're not. It's a private road. The homeowner, and it says so in the agreement. The homeowners will have to take care.
Whoever plows the road's gonna come through Old County Road, yeah.
Whoever plows the road. Would the people that own the houses have to plow the road and get a private contractor?
Yes, exactly. That's in the agreement.
It's not a homeowners association?
That subdivision road for those eleven houses will be a private road, and those people will have to make arrangements like any private subdivision road. But Mr. Colley's right, that truck that they hire would have to come down.
Now, would that be a homeowners association?
Yes, exactly.
So they, they're obligated to do that under their, with their.
Exactly, exactly.
It'd be sore and public water, public sore?
No, no.
So it's all private?
It's all some sentences.
So basically, we're isolating eleven houses out there from the city of Westfield. We're still gonna put the wear and tear and.
So I, I urge you all to send your questions to Mr. Pill, and we will keep you as updated as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and letting us know.
Thank you.
Can you bring up a question here?
No, I think I got it.
This is not a bad job.
How are you?
Oh, I got relatives up here.
Oh, really?
Kyle.
Wow, she was a board of health.
She had his board of health trust.
And, I know, you got a question. You asked me.
And that's exactly.
Take care. Bye, Phil.
Why the guys, why the guys still here, Mr. Pill?
Hey, Heather. Heather, can we break up the, the committee's in the hall right now?
Maybe those forms aren't public.
They're public right now.
They're not, they're not voted for. They're just, they're review with the, when they need authority.
No.
Hi.
Phil, champion.
Hi.
I took half my night away. I took half my night away.
I'm just afraid the ethics will come on. I gotta send no line. It will do what? It does.
Thank you. I just wanna keep, I wanna keep moving here. Not that, I don't wanna chat with all of you, but, um, I have, sure we all have other places to go tonight. So, um, our next agenda, item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Parks Commission and SYA in regards to La Bree Field and Conant Park. And this item was placed on the agenda after discussion at the last board of selectmen meeting in order to discuss the further status of these properties and who has control of them.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Um, my name's Mark Reed, chairman of the Parks Commission. Uh, Greg Mack is a member of the commission, as well as Paul Mack, he's also a member of the Parks Commission. Uh, Jeff Swanson is here tonight from SYAA, as well as Danny Nulless, um, and.
Waldemar.
Waldemar.
Jim Bishop.
Jim Bishop. And that's it, right? So, so it's time of a joint meeting between all three of us, um, to come up with a plan or discuss who's gonna manage, who's gonna be responsible for the field.
Can you ref, just, I was not at the last meeting, so did it just come up who's in charge of and who's responsible for? And now we need to talk about it?
Who's gonna pay for maintenance?
Well, we had this discussion all the way through when we were getting the original seven hundred thousand, the five hundred thousand dollars lot. We had a committee that was established, um, the La Bree Field Committee. They were to accept the designs and bring it forward. The actual funding to build the field went to the Parks Department. And from that point on, it was under the Parks Department to control and manage under the park system.
Okay.
And I don't know if Heather, if you've got the actual verbiage out.
I do not.
Okay. If you saw that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated, it was allocated to the Parks Commission.
Okay.
And then the Parks Commission wanted me to supervise the construction of that. Because there were certain things that weren't part of the seven fifty. I was above and beyond, like the driveway coming in, the paving of the driveway, the building of the driveway, and the hundred-car parking lot. That was all highway department's responsibility.
That was all highway department's responsibility, and planting of the trees was a highway department's responsibility. The seven fifty built the fields, sifted all the material, regraded the fields. The water department put a water main through that whole project, so it does have water when needed at various points. Um, and the original project was for like one point five million. We only had seven fifty. Um, there was a playground area for tots which we put on hold. There was a septic system and toilet facilities and concession stands that were all put on hold until we could find some other additional money. But at that vote to accept the seven fifty, the town passed it under the authority of the Parks Commission, okay? And I think when my last budget was there, I went to the finance committee for the mowing end of it to put seven or eight thousand dollars in there to mow that field under the highway department. And since then, there has been some cuts. I don't know what you have left of that original proposal, Randall. What was it reduced to, or was it reduced?
Uh, I don't know what was specifically reduced.
Because originally it was about three or four thousand dollars to maintain Conan Park, which was never enough. But I think the finance committee opted by seven thousand because they knew the field was coming online this year, okay? So if there was any additional money in there, that was for the, the La Bree Field.
I've been tracking every time we go out and mow any of the park land or the school, you know, I want to have a good idea what it costs to mow these things. So next year during the budget season, we have some hard numbers.
Yeah, but some of that money was allocated this year for mowing that field this year.
Okay.
Okay. But I don't know what, if, what the final number got reduced to. I don't have a spreadsheet here, but they didn't cut it all the way back. I think they cut it to maybe three or four thousand, and you had three thousand for the Conan Park.
Total budget was approximately for expenses, about thirty-five hundred dollars.
For Conan Park.
For Conan Park for expenses, and approximately thirty-five hundred dollars for, um, man hop, a different kind of, we got wages. Wages, thank you, Randall. So wages. So that's for all the park.
With the exception of fuel.
All the park.
I think with the exception of fuel, that was the only thing we ever took out of that, fuel. And then you used the rest for lights and some other minuscule stuff. There was a lot of money for it.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that's the same way.
I had this conversation with Randall about trying to do a quick handle on what's going to actually cost us to maintain a field. There's also not only the mowing of the fields, but we have to fertilize them, we have to lime and arc the fields, maintain the fields to be able to be played on by either S Y A A or other.
Well, let's back up again. When we had a discussion with S Y A A, there were still, the last discussion, one of the last discussions I had was they were still going to be doing some liming. They do the liming on all the other fields, and they were going to continue to do the liming. Now, liming is not a lot of money. It's just a labor intensive thing, but they were using volunteers. Now, ideally, I would say yes, we should be liming those fields under Park Commission, but we don't have the money, and I don't think you do either.
Correct.
Um, and the biggest thing to do is to maintain that, those fields and keep them cut, not to let them grow high. They, if they need to be cut twice a week, they have to be cut twice, twice a week. And we had that issue with Conan Park. If we got too high, it became too messy, it became clumpy, and we got bogged down. So, you know, there was never enough money to cut those fields as much as we did to cover the cost, never. And I'm talking thirty years of my experience.
Correct.
Okay. Um, the only time we ever gained anything was when we bought a much bigger machine. Now, that lawnmower, that big lawnmower that's been working good cuts eleven acres an hour, okay? And I said it back when we originally talked about new equipment, that as long as that was kept in good repair, that is going to save a lot of time and, and money because it can cut quick and it does a good job, okay? Um, I don't know if there's, you have any problems with it?
General maintenance.
Yeah. It should go out once or twice a year to Toro to get a thorough job because the hydraulics and that need to be adjusted, but those are things like that. All right. We do have a couple of the larger mowers, but they don't cut more than two acres an hour.
Does any of the maintenance for the fields come from S Y A A money?
No.
And for what reason?
Some that we have been in discussions about, trying to come up with a user fee that would be paid by the people that use the fields. We've also had some interest in renting the fields to not Southampton residents. To Premier Soccer League, for instance, would like to rent it. We also have an older thirty men's baseball league that wants to rent the fields on Sundays for their use every Sunday during the season. But we, as the Park Commission, have been struggling on what the cost is going to be to maintain the Bree Field and what is a justified price to charge somebody for using the fields. Currently, S Y A does not pay any fees for using Conan Park. Um, they have been in the past given some monies at times, from time to time, um, for different things. They've done most of the improvements to the new backstops that are there and the snap shack and the new signboard and other improvements that they paid for out of their own pocket, which hasn't come out of our expenses. Um, but we've never charged the fee to use it for soccer baseball or softball or.
Hold on one second. Mr. Bishop?
Uh, Jim Bishop, former Rose. You know, we, we do not, or have not paid a user fee to use any of the parks in town, including the, the school or Conan Park, and hopefully when we get stronger, the Bree Field, we won't be paying a user fee for that. We do spend a lot of money on maintenance, which the town, you know, the town helps us sometimes through labor, but for the most part, all the maintenance and, and, and care for the fields is taken care of by us. So although the money is actually transferred, there is a large cost involved. When we start talking about user fees, we have to start thinking about whether we're still going to pay for the maintenance or now is it a town park and does the town pay for all the maintenance? Does the town pay for all the fencing, all the upkeep? Is that going to be counted in with a, with a user fee? The user fee is not a simple thing. It's very complicated, especially the way we've done it in the past and that we just fix things.
Hey, that's that. I happen to agree with you, Jim. Uh, some of the things that Highway Department was able to do before all these cuts came through was to, we used to upkeep these fields with you, and for many years, uh, you helped purchase equipment with us, the, the, the ground crawl. And, you know, if we were going to do some improvements, uh, you would help with some, some of the loom, okay? Um, which helped out quite a bit, but has, things have changed in the last few years with manpower and stuff like that. Uh, I don't know how Randall's getting it done now, but you know, in the spring, we tried to get in and get those fields up. I think it was about a year, a year and a half ago, you guys wanted to try it before. We were tied up with a long winter, and we were cleaning up. But you guys took over and you upgraded those fields, and I do appreciate that. But I don't believe that, my personal feelings, these are taxpayers, these are kids that we need to give them something to do, and it's still, just because there's not enough money to do what we want, we should be maintaining these fields with their efforts and volunteerism to at least lime the fields and prep the fields at the beginning of the year. We should be able to try to at least maintain these fields and help them with these fields in, throughout the season. Um, there are things that we do, it don't seem like much maybe to the Park Commission or the S Y A A, but just to get those fences up as a two day project there for Little League and to take them down. And, um, you, um, the Parks Department paid for those. I think they paid about four or five thousand dollars when Antritco was president or chairman. Um, they worked out well. It was, it took us, it gave us the ability to use that field for multi purposes, just not just for baseball. And it worked out when soccer season came around, you want fields. But, um, we had a good working relationship before, um, and I, Mr. Swanson and I, we had a, we had discussions about keeping me informed on tournaments and stuff like that. We were trying to work with you people. And I think for the most part, it worked out all right, but at the Highway Department, we can't read your mind sometimes when you've got things going on, you need things, and we don't know what your schedules are, and we're punting. And the last couple of years I was there, it worked out pretty good. When my kids were on the team, it worked out pretty good because they were able to, you know, know what was going on. But my comment is, I think it's a joint effort with S Y A and the Park Commission to get these to a point that they're maintained properly, that holes are filled properly when they get developed by kids. Um, if you put a, a fee on them, I think it's the wrong message. That's my feeling. You want to put a fee on an outside thing? I have no problem with it, but they are citizens going there. Are you going to kick a father and three neighbors going over to the field and picking up playing softball and say, we need a fee? No. I mean, I just think that they're not minorities either. You need something, you need to talk to them. They need something, they need to talk to Randall and the Parks Commission, and it's got to get a tighter relationship, because it worked before.
Yeah, I understand that things can't continue the way they were.
No, but it worked before.
And I'm not president of S Y A, so I'm, I'm speaking just for myself and not really for the organization at this point. Um, I think my, my main thing was, is I don't want people to get the impression it was a free ride. It was not a free ride for S Y A.
No.
Okay. We, we didn't pay a user fee, we didn't have a set amount of money we had to put in, but we constantly were putting money into the programs and into the fencing and things like that. Um, I guess that was my main point. Uh, the second one is, is I, my personal opinion, user fees will not solve all the problems. We have to have a committee get together and iron out what the user fees are going to be used for, if there are going to be user fees, um, and where the money's going to go, and not just say, this is how much it's going to cost and give a blank check and then have none of the maintenance be done, or just have a lawn mower.
I, I understand what you're saying is, but the point is, um, Randall's got to use that money efficiently and effectively he's got. But the sad thing about it, when I was Highway Superintendent, we were using Highway Department money all the time to finish up the last six or seven mowings. Okay? Um, if there was, uh, the bridge collapsed, it wasn't the Parks Commission. They didn't have the money. We had, Highway Department had to build it, had to go repair it. The parking lot, that wasn't done by the Parks Commission. We paved that parking lot. So there, there was a lot of money and efforts that the Highway Department has done over the years that, I'm not saying they should get a pat on the back. Hey, it, it was an effective way of dealing with and improving, making improvements to the town. But those were a lot of items that came out of the Highway Department budget that weren't necessarily, um, predicated to go there. You have to be able to flip flop and change things around, but I don't think he has that flexibility anymore.
Hi, Greg Mack, five Coolidge Drive. Um, I've been on the Park Commission. I grew up in town, planned, you know, through S Y A A. And, uh, I, our issue, I don't think is, you know, the Park Commission basically has enough money to, to give to the Highway Department to mow the grass, and everything left over is to pay the other bills for lights, and that's about it. There's no extra money. We're not looking to S Y A A to, to help out, you know, to basically give us a ton of money because we don't have it. It's not the user fee. It's more for outside groups where if we're going to have a, an elite soccer team come and play, we have no idea what to charge them. You know, where you have, in all the towns around us, and Northampton has their own park and rep department with their own people that take care of just those things. East Hampton has an outdoor park. Every car that goes in gets, you know, charged to go, just to go in the door. So that's how they make their money. We don't make money that way, so that's why we're trying to figure out something. Obviously, we can't just tap S Y A A for everything they have to, to make up for what we don't have, and we're not looking to do that. So that's why we're hoping that Jeff Swanson is going to go to committee.
If you're going to have some outside agencies out there, I mean, if they're going to, say, say a soccer camp came in for two weeks, and they do something similar up to high school. I know they do it at Hoyokai. Uh, Hoyokai's got a turf product, but they, there, there's some kind of a commitment they're required. Uh, and I don't know how the money goes, but I know up to regional, they have a camp for two weeks, and I'm sure, um, there's a fee involved. And it might be, you, you can't charge for stuff you're not doing, as far as Mr. Gobert's concerned. But if he's mowing the grass for two weeks and he's got to put a guy over there to pick up litter and clean that, all those costs are legitimate.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
I think like, like Jim said, I think we just need to figure out, as Mark said, we need to figure out what everything's going to cost. And then we can say, okay, we, we need to come up with an extra seven thousand a year to pay, just to break even. So we need to be charging S Y A A a thousand to use everything, to use Conan, to use that. We need to charge this thirty over group eighty dollars a week, and that would, you know, help. It's just trying to figure out. It's one of the biggest things that we can struggle on, but then we, you know, user fee is a nasty word, um, and we can struggle in with that. Um, we don't want to charge S Y A A a user fee for the kids that rightfully should be able to use the town-owned properties and so forth. Um, but I think, um, one of the biggest issues that we have is with the budgets. And, um, you know, how do we maintain, how do we maintain it properly? La Bree Field, um, they just reseeded and fertilized it again.
When did they do that?
Monday. Monday. Yeah. They just did a contracted bid. Um, they just reseeded it again. So eventually, next year, for instance, they're going to be out of the picture altogether. And I don't know how much it costs to fertilize and lime that, but we don't have monies to do that.
I, I can tell you, because I did estimates on that before. It's going to be about six thousand dollars to fertili, fertilize and lime the whole field. But then I was being realistic and went back and saying, well, we need to do the baseball field and the premier soccer field. Those have to be maintained to a much better level.
Well, that's our, our point is, I, I guess so. Let's assume it's six thousand dollars a year to lime and fertilize La Bree Field. Right now, we, that's, we have seven thousand dollars. Thirty-five hundred goes to expenses, and thirty-five hundred dollars goes to, um, employees to be able to pave the highway, employees to mow the grass and so forth. Where's that six thousand dollars coming from? Um, the town needs to donate or allocate more monies to that.
Well, this is, and, Mark, this is a unique situation because as long as I've been here for thirty years, we, I mean, there was a lot of talk to fertilize the Noah's School, which was a school. And, um, the first couple of years I was in, they fertilized it, and after that, they cut it out. Now, as long as I've been at Highway Department, uh, which is thirty years, we've never fertilized Conan Park with the exception of when we put new sod in in the infield and the little infield. And we did that once or twice. Um, fertilizing on a regular basis is, it's going to be necessary if you want a good established grass over there for the next couple of years. Maybe after it gets going and, you know, it can be a little less often, but especially if you get the, you know, the pH up with the lime.
Cur, you know, currently, for instance, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just see a lot of hands.
Okay, sorry.
Mrs. McConnell?
Jessica McConnell, Clifford High Street. Um, I'd be curious to know what you consider outside groups versus town groups. Um, like some place for Hampshire United, twenty percent of the students who play Hampshire United soccer are from Southampton. It does include West Hampton, Ocean Chesterfield students, but almost everybody is from Southampton. Um, we currently play at West Hampton Elementary. We maintain our own soccer bowls, our own nets. We do all the, our own lines. Um, Home Depot donated fence and came and put a fence up there. We pay a considerable fee to the club, and I've been told multiple times by people in charge in the club that we are willing to pay to play on La Bree Fields. The question is, is if you're charging a fee, then that makes it an even playing field. If you don't charge a fee, that gives us, that gives S Y, no offense to S Y A, but some play here too, but that gives them precedence. But all of the kids that are playing Hampshire United, most of those are Southampton residents. So why should one club get preference over another club? When you charge a fee, you kind of level the field, and then everybody's paying, everybody has equal access. You know, and we, I've been told we are willing to pay. We do maintain the fields up in West Hampton where we play now. But they, they'd really like to come back down here to town and be a lot easier on parents.
Yeah, I, I think, I think all of them, and just wants to. Um, but I think the key thing is that, you know, we are growing, and we are, and so the field, from going from Conan Park to another nineteen acres of, of grass, um, what fields and had here was just to put some town plot.
what fields and had here was just to put some town plans in these fields and add a quality field. So we built a premier soccer field, not just a soccer field, or a meadow that we used to use, a power meadow. Same with the baseball field, the diamond, these kids brought out of town to play to win their district, and then bring the banners back to town and the students drive them out. So we haven't had that showcase, that nice field for the kids to play. So I think, I think the key is when it comes to, and I come from a strong community that has a very strong park and rec community. I was here today as an American, I have a more relation. User fees are really, you know, the thought on that is that it does offset some of your costs as much as the park can charge that. I think the expectation now, some of the people in the programs now, is that the volunteer pool isn't as, you know, the town's, because the lines are already done and the grass is free. So I think that hurts the pride of the town a little bit. We've done the best we can. We've been working for years to develop those fields, and we have three or four volunteers that usually come down. But we've got a new group coming in. I think the Hampshire United thing is unique in that we are really, SYA is still the affordable recreational program for the kids in town. So I think that is the baseline for the community. So we are kind of activist recreational group for the community for the three seasons. So, and, and we do put in the time and effort of the volunteers and maintaining the fields, it's just good. But I think we're at a point now where we realize that we were much less open user fee for our own kids in the town, and so that the expectations have been low, but I think we gotta bring it up a little bit. And I think that's why we're willing to help in whatever way we can. So that's why my interest of getting involved with the park, and the park, and I started this last week with, I remember watching the grass grow, I want to use it. So what can we do at this point? And, you know, I talked to the guys who was out there, and the guys were like, geez, we're done, and someone's seeded this, and it's compacted. Geez, you just, hey, you got the water here, and I talked to Randall about it, here, just the baseball field and the soccer field, we can get the grass growing. There's no guarantees it's gonna grow again right now, except that we got hope for rain, or the gin comes in, gets us enough stuff like. That's, that's what we have hope for. Quality issue we can control.
Well, the other thing too is, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're not water-rich. It was a seven fifty thousand gallon gallon. And when Norris was coming, we were watering that field and we were emptying that tank in the middle of winter. At, at the, and we stopped because we weren't, we weren't, we didn't have much of a supply for fire protection, and we're borderline having enough water. So you're not gonna see that kind of, you know, watering done.
Because those are all laws we're gonna have, but, you know, whether the Park Commission or you guys or Randall, and the park management's work. Strategically, we can do that, you know, to make sure this thing's taken.
I guess the other concern that we have is that if an organization wants to donate something to the Park Commission, it doesn't get put into the general funds.
Yeah, all, all they would do is just if they come into town hall itself and they let us know, we actually put things aside, and we have gift funds for most of our stuff. So we do, we do make sure that even if there isn't a gift fund, there's some way to allocate and stuff.
Well, and we have an issue right now, we have an issue right now that I'm trying to investigate. We need to talk to our town accountant, but we have an angel park memorial. And that money that was in that made a bond, and that was donated by individuals for that. So it's not a safeguard system the town has. And I'm just concerned that monies, we also disappear. We've had issues in the past where we rented a pavilion, and we have lost monies in the past from those rentals of the pavilion. And then it disappeared. And we fought many times to figure out before Vicky came on board, David Killson was here, where that money disappeared to. And we currently, looking at some of our line on the budgets, we're down to zero. So something has happened in the past month where monies have been moved around.
If you give us a, if you give us a call tomorrow, what we can do is we can actually pull up the budget, and we can pull up each line and see what's going in and what's coming out. So we can, we can work on that.
Correct. So that's a concern I have, or we have as a commission, if whatever entity wants to pay us for using the field or not, to make sure that it gets used properly.
Mark, do you ever consider having a fund strictly with donations? And there might be citizens, you don't know. There was a wealthy citizen that gave an anonymous donation to the Council on Aging, or the, the Omer's, and it was, you know, substantial. So maybe if you could develop some kind of a fund that has safeguards that you want, that can only be used for, you can be specific as you want.
Currently, I don't know if people have noticed, but the fountain at Kona Park is no longer on. The historical commission, who has the old schoolhouse, paid for the electricity for that fountain, the Park Commission every did. The town cut their budget, so the historical commission said, "We don't have fifty dollars a month to pay for the fountain." The fountain was shut off because there's no money for that. We've talked to SYA and Jeff Swanson, and we're, they're in discussions about trying to donate monies so the fountain can be put back on. And that's some of the things that, that, you know, need to be addressed. And I understand that the budget is nothing and dire need. But, you know, that's one avenue that we're trying to work out. I'm talking to Vicky about how that fifty dollars, for instance, is paid by SYA a month to have that fountain back on. And that doesn't just get sucked up into the general funds. So, you know, those are some of the things that need to be worked out.
Mr. Risha?
I just wanted to touch on one thing. You know, when you were talking about the Hampshire United club, we are not a club. SYA acts as a park and rec. Every person who signs up plays. You don't try out for a team, you don't get caught. We take anyone and everyone. So we are an acting, basically, park and rec. We have a Parks Commission, of course, but, you know, in most towns, we would be the park and rec. So when we start talking about outside groups coming in, you know, I would hope that the group that's based as the park and rec would be the first group that would have access to the fields. There are gonna be leftover times. Lots I understand that, and they should be delegated out to other groups. But I would hope that we would still keep intact the idea that we are the park and rec. And one last thing, the Hampshire United group, which she says, you know, which we're talking about, was invited to all the meetings before the field was built, and decided that they already had their fields and didn't come to any of the meetings. So when, I understand they may feel as though they were excluded. That's not the case. And I don't know whether it's still the same leadership or not, but the past leadership was invited to all the meetings, and we asked them to come, and they never showed up.
The leadership has changed over.
Okay, so, you know, I think this is a great dialogue to have, and I think there's a lot more dialogue to be had. The second agenda, or the third agenda item is to fill a vacancy that the Park Commission has, with Jeff Swanson to be appointed by the select board as to fill in that vacancy. That's gonna be very helpful.
Has it been posted?
Yes. So that's another reason to have a joint meeting with, you know, the Park Commission, just to hopefully, to make that happen. We're in a good time now. We're getting towards the end of the season. We can hopefully work through the winter months and come up with a plan that works for everyone, so that in the spring, when the fields are ready to go, we can go, you know? Let the kids play on it. You know, people have asked, you know, "When can we start planting on the brief field? When can we do this? When can we do that?" And, and I agree with Mr. Colley is, you know, you don't want to go on and start planting on that field soon before the grass is established. Ed has said that for a year now, that you want to let it grow and mature and get the root systems out there, because if you start using it right away, it's just gonna be ruined, and it's gonna be a great expense to reseed it and replant it and go through it. So, so I think, you know, by waiting until next year, next spring to use it, we're gonna be in pretty good shape, and we have the time to work out all this.
Jackie?
I was just gonna say, I'm a huge fan of fundraising. And with the SYA or even your organization, what if we had a sports stuff at the beginning in the spring? Had contests, and you know how you get bake sales and raise some money that way, just to start off? And try to help ourselves, I mean, we can do that, right? I mean, we can have the community come together and start off with some of the funds that way?
Tony Williams, two ninety-eight College Highway. I'm the sponsorship director right now for SYA. And I think it's now, three years ago, we had some members come forth at a meeting and suggested the fundraising, and that's when we started doing the banners that you now see around Home Depot. And that's how we were able to raise money to do the scoreboard and the dugouts, and update the different things there by contacting different companies and sponsorships throughout the town. That's how we get our fees to be as inexpensive as they are, for the kids to be able to play. I don't know.
But what do you think about some kind of contest with different athletes and, you know, something kind of fun to get the kids together every year?
Yeah, I think the key thing is that, the fear factor is that if it goes into the town coffers, it's gonna back out, get it back out to the park. You know, so whereas SYA, we're able to, as
I agree with that.
...an organization, we can
But if it was your event and you sponsored it, and the money just, I mean, can we legally do that if they did it?
Well, we, like I said, we have to create a gift fund specifically, so that's your logic, restricted funds for the park. Or the brief field, but maybe you could get specific potentially.
And we can help you.
Put it to the park.
No, we can't. I mean, they have to.
I mean, we can put it on our website, we can help advertise it.
As it currently stands, the money that we get for the banners at Kona Park, we are trying to donate fifty percent back to the parks. And they did make, right, they did make a donation last year to the Park Commission, which is gratefully accepted for some of that monies that they did raise from the banners. And we've used that money in a couple of different ways. We just had some repairs done to the cracks in the, in the tennis courts. We had another fundraiser that was done to generate monies to buy new nets, tennis nets, by group of people. And that was very successful. We were able to buy new tennis nets for the course, court. And then we made a decision to expend our monies and some of the money that we got from SYA last year to fix the cracks in the tennis courts, and that has been done. There are other repairs needed. There are three other washout areas at Kona Park that need to be addressed, which we have no money to repair. We talked to Randall and Conservation Commission about those repairs. And, you know, they need to get done again, but there's no money to do that.
So I think that this was a good beginning to conversations between the two groups in the town of, you know, at least we know what we need, and how are we gonna get there, and some ideas surrounding that, and maybe a good segue into talking about Mr. Swanson joining the Park Commission?
Okay, give Mark some advice. Mark, the money for the purchase of the little brief field, part of it came from community preservation.
Correct.
The actual construction money, the seven fifty, came from community preservation. The rules have changed a little bit. I'm recommending you go talk to Virginia and see how the rules have played out in regards to stuff that was purchased by community, community preservation funds. If you can get additional funds from her for, I won't say maintenance, but establishing fertilizing, which is, you still want to get that lawn established. And, you know, there might be some money there. And also, I know we're mowing the fields, nobody's playing on it yet, so some of those costs might be construed. She'll have to talk to people in Boston, but I know rules for athletic fields have changed as far as what support you can get from the community development funds.
And you're correct.
And I think you ought to talk to her.
Yep. We have, yeah, that's true.
In two thousand twelve, now you can do maintenance and, you know.
So I mean, I mean, there is some money there that's probably a lot more healthier than, you know, the town funds.
This is just a sidebar. If anyone pays one of the project, the second phase, we're giving the other half million dollars to complete the project. The brief field committee, which we were working, we were on the gym zone, has, hasn't met for quite a while, so.
Well, I mean, we weren't to meet until the field was going, and Charlie made a recommendation, we stay in effect until it was done. Now, I do believe the town should be moving forward when a grant program comes around. Now, part of the problem was, is you can't get the grant all the time if you got it in so many years. And I believe this is the year that we can start reapplying for that three-year window. Yeah, but unless it's a regional concept, what I mean, regional, it's gotta be available to all the surrounding towns, come in and use it when you want. You can't apply for anything but fifty thousand a year. Right.
What's on the assumption that, and I thought this is how we got it on the last one, we are, SYA is a regional program. We have people from Hampshire Regional, from West Hampton.
Well, that's your interpretation, but that's not their interpretation. Okay? That's not their interpretation.
I thought that's, I thought that was the, I thought that was the.
If Westfield wanted to come in and use the field, and we weren't scheduled for anything, they could. If Northampton wanted to come and use the field, you know, that was a regional concept. It, it's the same thing in a lot of grant programs. You get more if you can open up your, the amount of people you're servicing. Okay? But we're not excluded. It's just that you can't go after eight hundred thousand dollars. You can go after fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and our, our issue too is we don't have all the transportation, and there's a lot of other little.
I mean, the parking lot's built for the hundred and twenty cars, remember? We built that as part of the prerequisite, that in future, the grants might change, and we'd be able to do it. But, you know, we need probably about three, four hundred thousand dollars to finish that. Now, here's another cost that just came to me, is that when that field opens up, we're gonna have to get sandy cans out there. You're gonna need two, you know.
Those are the things that we traditionally pay for through SYA. Again, the things that no one sees, all the costs that are incurred, that no one sees, and are a lot of them. And we have never really written down everything that we pay for. We probably should.
But I, I mean, I agree with Mark. This has been a great start, and I think the board agrees to it. And you need to come in here and talk again, or you want to ask that one of us be on your committee? I, I, I think it's important to get a committee, Mark. Not necessarily your whole committee, but maybe one member, SYA, one member of anybody that might be an outside agency wants to come in and put their two cents in and talk about how forming this fundraiser or something like that.
Don't they already have a, do they already have a committee for that?
Well, you had that building needs committee, didn't you?
Oh, we also have a recreational needs committee.
Yeah, recreation.
I, I don't think.
I don't think the members, I mean, you're on it. You're on it. I don't know if you're on it.
Might be.
But it was like seven members.
And that's actually a hard one, because I got a notification to worry about. Or I didn't have a lot, but interesting to bring it back, but versus having several committees, and maybe more sense to join the Park Commission, and consolidate the decision making versus having more regional needs, Park Commission, the brief field committee, it's not important.
And, I mean, these grants, I'm, I had to keep a rye as all for them, but they, they do, some come out in September, some come out in October. And they're through the Department of Community Development is one, and through the Department of Park and Recreation, not Park and Recreation, Forestry and Lands.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that Jeff is gonna be a great asset as a member of the Park Commission. Getting to the next segue, what we're talking about here. And I can speak for myself and Paul and Greg to speak to theirs, but at our last meeting, we were all in favor of it. We have another member, Ryder Paul, who didn't make it here tonight. That's the four current members of the Park Commission. All agree that we would recommend to Laura Sleckman that they appoint Jeff to fill that vacancy.
Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Swanson?
No, I'm not a well enough to say that he would make a great member, I have no reservations.
I make a recommendation to appoint Jeff Swanson to the Park Commission.
Is there a second?
No, Mark, I think that's only until the next election.
Correct.
I have a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, do you need to, did I need to call off?
We, we did at our previous meeting, but we can vote again.
If you give the copy to the minister, Heather, then she'll have it.
Yeah, I have that copy. Laura, if you wanna make a vote right now, and then, because it is a joint meeting, so.
You got a quorum? Yes, you do.
Yes, we do.
We have a motion to have Jeff Swanson join the Park Commission.
Second? All seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and letting us know your opinions, and we're moving forward with this.
Thank you.
In an effort to move along, I'm just getting the approval of minutes until the end of the meeting. There's a payroll warrant. I would accept a, I would accept a motion to sign the payroll warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor? Can you sign it and pass it this way, please? You all have it down there.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
Good, how you doing?
Oh, I skipped the minutes, no, I, I didn't.
More comfortable.
Let me just sign it for some time.
So is that a payroll warrant you're talking about?
Yes, yes, there's a motion, second, and all in favor to sign the payroll warrant.
That's the fifteen, PD-oh-seven?
Yes. This is payroll warrant, payroll deduction warrant fifteen dash seven, the amount thirty-three thousand, seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
You'll make a motion?
Hold on to that one.
I made the motion. No, no, Liz, um.
I made the motion, Jackie's second.
I put it here, I can.
It's a bridge.
Yeah. There's a whole bunch in here, but only one on the. Oh, sorry, I see it.
I am freezing, I can't see.
I have a payroll deduction warrant, PD fifteen dash nine, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have.
You know what, shut this right now, because we're gonna.
I have a payroll deduction warrant fifteen dash nine A, in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Is there a motion to sign?
Motion to sign.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Is that there now, what's on the agenda?
I only listed the beginning of it, 'cause I don't know which ones are coming.
They're not presented.
You don't have numbers on your agenda. The only one you have is the earlier one, which is last, the continued business is the first one they did, the fifteen PD-oh-seven. That was on the continued business, she skipped down a payroll warrant.
Right.
And I don't have the numbers until the day of the meeting, or how many payroll. Yeah, you're not going to have that, is what I'm telling you. I don't get the information until about four hours before the meeting, so I can't publish it. I have a motion and a second, are you all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sign that and pass it down. This is a whole. And then I have the payroll warrant fifteen dash nine, in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, you need to sign this, not Jackie. Okay. Okay. Then, let's see, hold on, let me catch myself. Um, we have a special municipal employees designation. Uh, this is continued from July twenty-ninth. The two meetings ago, the Board of Selectmen voted to designate all present and future boards, committees, and commission members as special municipal employees, subject to objections by Town Council. Town Council asks that a list be created that capture all of these boards, committees, and commissions in order to satisfy any requests by the Board of Ethics, and that the Board review and add to the list as necessary, at least annually. If it's in your packet. Has everyone had a chance to look at it?
I don't have a packet, no, I think we'll look at it.
Am I missing?
Jackie, John?
It's okay. I reviewed it already.
It's on page seventeen. Anybody have any objections, anything they wanna add? Do we need to vote to approve these again? So I would accept a motion to designate this list effective, is this effective today? As of today, Heather?
Yep.
So this list effective August twenty-sixth as special town employees? Do we need to read the list?
Can it be like?
Agricultural Commission, Almoners, Assessors, Capital Improvement Committee, Cemetery Commission, Community Preservation Commission, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Finance Committee, Greenway Feasibility Committee, Board of Health, Historical Commission, Housing Authority, Library Trustees, Park Commission, Personal Policy and Procedure Board, Planning Board, Recreational Needs Committee, School Committee Local, School Committee Hampshire Regional District, Select Board, Water Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals.
And the Select Board just has a note, doesn't have to, they're free to be there, 'cause they're.
Automatic.
Continued, yes.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then.
We can move to the bill warrant.
I need the bill warrant.
I'll give you the table. She's tough.
She sees me jumping around. I have a bill warrant, and this was from last week, that we need to approve. A bill warrant in the amount of. The numbers are different, Heather, is that a typo on here?
Probably.
So in the amount of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred, seventy-seven dollars and ten cents. Is there a motion to sign?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John, you need to sign it, Jackie, you're not. Okay, now can we move on to the PCS?
Yes, you may, move on to the PCS. I'm gonna give you one second at a time, 'cause we have tons of.
Are they in the order?
Yes, as long as no one mixed up the order.
So the first, the first PCF is for, and tell me if I say his name wrong, Toyle? I don't know. Is for Kevin Toyle, the administrative assistant to the town administrator, it's a part-time position. The Board of Selectmen agreed once to vote to allow Heather and myself, as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to interview and select a new administrative assistant to the town administrator. Uh, we held several interviews, six of them, four of them actually showed up. Which was kind of unfortunate. Uh, and we selected Kevin Toyle as our final candidate and sent letters and thank yous to all the other application, applicants for their time. Kevin begins work on Tuesday, September second, and will work eighteen hours a week. I met him, he's very nice, I liked him a lot, and I think he's gonna be a good fit in Heather's office. So I have a PCF to sign, it's been approved. Do I have a motion to sign?
So.
Is there a second?
What is ours gonna be?
Um, they're kind of around what I need, so it will be Monday mornings, Tuesday will be in the afternoon part of the day, Wednesday will be most of the day, and Thursday will be towards the afternoon. Depends on when the heavier work load is. Mondays are busier, because it's crazy and there's always a crisis. Tuesday afternoon, because it's right before the board meeting. Wednesday all day, because then we have to recover from the board meeting and get something else. And then Thursday afternoon, because we have to prepare for yet another board meeting.
So I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's pretty much how she explained it to him, too, so. He seemed okay with that.
So, he'll be last, Heather.
I think he's gonna be just fine. He was very friendly with two young Walton boys that came in one day and handled them just fine, so I think.
Heather's not.
Um, our next PCF is for Richard Paul, the paramedic firefighter, part-time. This item was continued from a past meeting when it went back to the PQB at the request of the applicant. Well, I was just being, I didn't see this letter yet, so maybe. Oh, no, it's a different letter. Um, so it has been signed by the PQB. It has been signed by the Finance Committee, you have to follow their. I see, okay, so first it said no, then they signed, then there's a note, then there's this. So it was recommended by the Finance Committee tonight, that we sign. And now it's left to the Board of Selectmen. And they think it was made very clear at our last meeting, to me anyway, what the purpose of this paper is and what the purpose is not. So I would accept a motion to sign or not sign.
For a discussion, I'll make a motion to sign. We need to discuss it, we need a motion and a second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Now, without going into a lot of detail, we went over the information and why the person wasn't here terminated last time. And Chief weighed in on his opinion. Personally, I can see why the person was terminated, and I can see why the chief would say, okay, somebody made a mistake, but after interviewing him, you feel comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, when I first came in, I had, you know, I hired paramedics, we had seven chiefs, and from, you know, honestly, he wasn't my first trained back. Just because there was history.
Okay.
As, as we progressed, identified that we really have some holes in our nighttime slot. We don't have, you know, we have three paramedics that are even viable. Um, when you go onto the state websites, you can see who's available in this area. So not just Southampton, but East Hampton, Westfield, uh, West Hampton. And we're very limited, I mean, I've got two candidates now, Rick is one, and you're gonna see one next week. Present as a good firefighter experience. So, you know, it's, there's not a large pool of applicants. The thing that I look at, just number one, I think I've been to the department. So I took some of the past history, I've spoken with all the department members that, you know, had any concern, anybody that wanted to talk, anybody I could basically corner and just say, hey, what do you think? So that's probably the biggest thing, we're a team, he needs to be part of that team, and so that's my major concern. Past that, can he do the job, is he qualified to do the job? He's a full-time firefighter medic in, in Westfield, he's got medical control from CDH. So he has the qualifications to do the job. I think the big one, which has really been the sticking point between all of this really, is the last thing that I have in, in my criteria, is what's the liability to the town? What's the liability for some of the stuff in his file for reoccurrence? I spent some time, you know, directly, talking to him in regards to that, because, you know, it's, it's, there is a history. And so that does concern me. Um, like I say, it's not, it's not my first applied graphic here, but I think he's a good man, and for the first two reasons. I think he fits into the department, and I think he knows his, his job. And I don't think that there's, you know, I don't think that there's a recurrence there. I think that there's some lessons learned, and it needed to be. And here we are. I thought, I thought him to fit in and fit that bill, so I presented the PCF.
Um, I will say that I sat in on the conversation with the PQB firstly, with Chief Workman, and, you know, voted one way. And after speaking with Dr. Dougal at our last meeting I was at, I think it made it more clear to me what my role actually is. And by not approving this, I guess it would say that I don't trust the job that you're doing. And that's not the right position for me to be in. So my own opinion is that we go ahead and sign the PCF and trust that Chief Workman is making the right choice for the town.
I, I think one of the questions you're bringing to us to answer is, is there a liability?
Well, that's, I, I don't, you know, I've assessed that, I mean, you need to assess that.
Okay, so, now, is, is the gentleman here?
Yes, yes.
Would it maybe helpful to have him address the issue? 'Cause I don't know the gentleman.
Do we need to go into executive session to talk about that kind of stuff? If you're going to go into a character concept.
Well, my thought is just to ask him about the incident and where, what his thoughts are at this point in time. I mean, that's something he can volunteer to.
If, if, if John Workman had this discussion with him, I mean, he has to be satisfied. I mean, that's my feeling, 'cause he's gonna be responsible, it'll all come back on his shoulders.
Actually, it'll come back on our shoulders. I mean, I trust, I trust his, I trust his judgment.
It will come back on his shoulders and then on our shoulders.
Yeah, and which is the town.
But, I mean, we hire people, we need to trust them, and do their job.
Yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent, so your confidence level didn't seem to be real high. It was kinda like, this is the pool that I have and I gotta work with.
Yeah, I mean, if I had a million people, you know, would you go back it where there was issue before? You may not, you know, we don't have that. So I really had to look at that issue, and it's a challenging thing to look at some of the personnel files, and really try and delve into all the complexities of it. It's not an easy one way or the other.
Yep.
And I spent a good amount of time doing that. I take my job very seriously, you know, my family is behind, you know, the decisions that I make, and, you know, the liabilities to every day. So it's not an easy decision to make. Not everything in this world is black and white, and trying to figure out as close as it can, it's best interest for the department, for the people of this community, and for the town. I've looked at that, and I, you know, I'm, am I ninety-five percent, or am I, you know, eighty-five percent? You know, I mean, there's could be stronger candidates, but they're not.
But you're comfortable enough to hire.
Comfortable enough to present.
Okay, that's fine with me. Yeah, okay, thanks. That's good.
Is there a minute discussion? So you have a motion and a second? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
I do.
Good luck.
I know you're okay.
Okay, next, um, that's it for PCS, right?
No, that's missing one.
Right, I'm trying. All right, so, oh, these might go, this one, go quickly.
Those resignation.
Yeah. So the first piece, uh, not the first, the next PCF we have is a resignation separation for Ruth Burnier, the Assistant Town Clerk, would you like me to read the letter?
Yes.
And so, "I hereby submit my resignation as Assistant Town Clerk, effective September twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Things have been somewhat hectic at this time of the year, my health, my family, and other things. I enjoy working for the town and look forward to the next phase of my life. Sincerely, Ruth Burnier." So I would accept a motion, sadly.
I make a motion to accept her resignation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With regrets, of course.
I don't like it.
She deserves it.
I know, you're good.
For the process, we have to post the position?
Well, then, that gives us a personnel, a PS, is this real?
It should be coming later on, the paperwork proceeding.
So I don't need this, then?
What's that? No, that's just paperwork, that's a separation, so it's all attached to my.
We then have a. PCF for a resignation separation for Chris Roy, who worked for the Fire Department. Um, so mutually agreed upon resignation, effective August third. I should read this one also. "To Chief Workman, is with deep regret that I give you my formal notice of resignation as an AMG firefighter, fighter at the Southampton Fire Department. My last working day will be August twelfth, two thousand fourteen. All but and alone to myself throughout the duration of my employment will be handed in on the mention of date of. I have accepted a position with another company that will further my growth and develop my career. I have enjoyed working at Southampton Fire Department, however, this new position that I have accepted will challenge my growth and further my career. I appreciate the professional development and growth from Southampton Fire Department, and in particular from you. Your mentoring support has encouraged me throughout my employment. I wish you and the Southampton Fire Department continued growth." I appreciate the professional development and growth from Southampton Fire Department and in particular from you. Your mentoring support has encouraged me throughout my employment. I wish you and the Southampton Fire Department continued growth and success in the future." Is there a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept it?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next PCF is also resignation separation for Daniel Hurley, who's leaving, leave of absence for military duty. There's a lot of letters here. Do you want me to keep reading? Okay, is there, is there a motion to sign?
Some more.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
John, is he intended to come back, or?
Yes.
Was it six months to twenty?
Yes.
Is he like twenty-three or something like that?
With these resignation, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is he like twenty-three or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know who he is. He's a good kid, yeah.
With these resignations, how many paramedics are you losing?
With these ones, none.
Okay.
But we have ones as well, we try to be sure.
So we have another PCF for resignation separation from the fire department for Brendan Struthers. Had a change in his availability. He knows the name, hopeful separation. Is there a motion to sign?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, and this still has to get posted, is that true, Heather?
Posted today.
Okay, so we have a resignation. Dear Southampton Select Board members, on behalf of the Southampton School Committee, I'm writing to inform you of a vacancy on the school committee. The vacancy is the result of Mr. Donald Abel's August fifth resignation from the school committee. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eleven requires that written notice from the school committee to the select board so that the vacancy may be filled by the district voter of the town until the next annual town meeting. So, that being said, town voters of Southampton, there's an opening on the school committee. Probably would really need use some help at this point.
We already have one applicant, that's positive.
Do I need to vote on this right now, or should I just make the board aware?
You just make the board aware, so they can see how restricted.
And the school committee meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock, if anyone would like.
Is the vacancy filled by the board?
That's a joint, a joint meeting, I'm pretty sure.
More.
Okay, so we've done all those.
I have some questions on that when you read those. Should we do them now?
We're gonna do them right now.
John?
Yes.
We have a whole lot of PCS here.
Yeah, we're talking about fees in general.
Okay, go ahead.
You submitted some change in fees for, was it?
Yeah, it's actually.
Standby, is it standby?
Yeah, it's actually already in place, so we're just.
So the funding is there?
Yes.
Okay. You're not cutting anything out to make the funding available, are you?
No, we cut it back on some weekends, but that was just because we're, that was.
As long as you have the funding and you're not, you know, it's not gonna put us in a hole later on.
No, 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 actually, it's something that was already in place. When I first came in, the paramedics, it was a standard to give fifty dollars. Personal policy procedure board, I said just do twice the regular standby, which threw the standby budget off, but there was money available there. So I supplemented it with money from the fire wages, and then I sent away the three dollar an hour daytime, because daytime coverage wasn't an issue. But I did have, there is concern with just nighttime coverage. So this was to bolster, to give a fair way to the EMTs, to bolster their participation in nighttime coverage. And that was effective in May. So the first paramedic was effective already when they got hired back in October. It makes no change to my budget. The second one also makes no change to my budget. It went into effect in May, though, just to get better coverage.
One last question. I know there was some issues with the chief on being able to get coverage on either Saturday or Sunday at particular times of the day, that wasn't able to get coverage. Will this eliminate that problem?
Well, I mean, all that I'm doing to manage is to try and, is to really try and get, you know, the nighttime coverage. So I'm not sure the, the short is that you're.
I, I don't know if there was a, there was a couple, there was an incident a couple of times, they weren't able to get anybody, they had to call East Hampton.
Well, and that's been, I mean, that's something that's been ongoing. I mean, we used to always call East Hampton for any kind of advanced level care. Of course, when we went to advanced level, we, you know, back in October, we hired a bunch of paramedics. So we cover, you know, a good ninety percent of our, our calls. There still are some gaps, and that's the whole thing that I've been trying to manage with, you'll see some PCS come through next meeting. Just, I've got another medic who's not a firefighter, but is a medic, just to try and pick up the hole on the, we just dealt with earlier, five hundred calls, just to try and just fill some of the gaps that we are still having.
I just wanna make sure we're working toward that.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're very much working to have full-time coverage, advanced level care, twenty-four seven.
Okay, great.
Are there any other questions about these? So can I group these together? Okay, so I would.
Yes.
I would accept a motion. Do I need to read all the names?
Yes.
Let me read the names.
So I would accept a motion to sign the PCS change, for wage change in standby for paramedics to fifty dollars per evening for Kyle Miltmore, Patrick Eline, Benjamin Hogan, Rich Blomstrom, John Ferrero, Mark Thro, Corey Ducharme, Randy.
Horace.
Horace, Lee Kozakowski, Scott Bullock, Richard Craven, and David Moret. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, why don't you pass that next one down? Can you give that to her? And then I'll keep signing this. If you would like to make a motion about these and read the names, and I'll just keep signing.
Okay. Sorry.
These are in effect of the same thing, different people, for EMTs only.
Standby pay adjustments to bring paperwork in later, okay. Non-medic, two hour or fifty dollar, whichever is less, for Wayne Theodore, Richard Vesoli, Dean Reel, Brendan Heath, Zachary Kalita, Joseph Veal, Megan Pike, James Garska, William Mickle, and Jeremy Arachal, and Ellen Whitney Torre. Have a motion to accept that?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's great today.
There's a PRF for the assistant town clerk for eighteen hours a week to fill the position that Ruth is leaving.
We have a motion to accept.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
A question. This is eighteen hours, which, what is it now, more than that? We're reducing it to?
It says non-beneficent, non-benefited, flexible additional hours may be needed later.
That's a good way to take opportunities like if you're assistant and saving money there. Doesn't hurt anybody.
So you need a second?
Yeah.
Second. All those.
All in favor?
Aye. That's fine, I'll set. Thank you.
John, what's that on your list? Start?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, where are the other five? I have, I didn't sign those five. I only got through one file while you were reading. Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah? I have a one-day liquor license for Conant Park for the women's club for September sixteenth.
They having a party?
They having a potluck women's club meeting at, from, anywhere from six to nine hours, it was from six to nine P.M.
Like the party?
They, I having beer and wine. Okay, the whole harmless clauses here. All those in favor, can I have a recommendation?
Need a motion to sign.
Need a motion to sign.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Conant Park.
I'll sign this one.
It says that on the agenda.
It doesn't say it.
It doesn't say, it doesn't?
Yes, it does. Conant Park, right here.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Love, love.
It doesn't say it. It's the first time I've left that off. I'm so sorry.
That's not the first.
First time I've left the Conant Park off.
There's been a couple slip-ups.
We should do longer agendas.
But you can have ours, and you can do it on. Our hard day on Wednesday.
The next one is an amended amendment to the current entertainment license at Pizza ninety-nine. They were approved for a karaoke license in July, but would like to amend it to include all entertainment at this time.
Well, what does that mean?
Does that cover jukeboxes and some pool tables and all that?
No, it's just the regular entertainment that everybody else has. Everyone else's license in the file has all entertainment, and by entertainment, it generally means, you know, television and music and DJ and live music. Right now, as it stands, our entertainment licenses are not specific. We can make them that way for next year, so people can actually apply for everything they want, but it can be listed out. So if you, if they want a live band, if they want karaoke, what have you, it can all be listed.
The only question I have, Heather, it says, live entertainment outside after nine P.M. Where are they going outside?
It's the same lang, I just use the exact same language as we had in every other single entertainment.
Who else has an all entertainment license?
Those who have Pizzanos and.
Opa-opa have one, yeah.
But there's no outside area.
There's no outside area. There's two tables outside the door, but.
We give them permission.
And it's not conducive for entertainment.
Yeah, I agree.
We could take it, we can modify and take that off, but then we're gonna have to go back and look at the other.
I'd rather have it restricted inside the building.
Okay.
There's no, there's no platform or anything for them to have entertainment outside.
I don't think we have to go back and modify. It's just going forward, we.
Scratch it off.
Opa-opa has an outside place, so that's fine.
So do you wanna scratch it off and approve it that way, or do you wanna scratch it off and bring it again?
Well, how about I scratch, you, how about we see if the board will be so kind as to make a motion with that amendment, and the chair can sign on another day.
I'll make a motion that the entertainment is fine till nine o'clock, inside the building, not outside the building.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so now you would like me to come back in and sign that? Randall has a question. Yes, sir.
Just a comment. Couldn't they do the parking lot? Couldn't they have entertainment in the parking lot?
No.
Harley-Davidson doesn't.
Self-contained. What about all the other businesses that need that parking lot?
I don't, I just, topic for discussion.
And every time they have something, it's a one-day license they come in from, Harley-Davidson shop. And speaking of Harley-Davidson shop, I don't remember the license last time, but I do live behind there. The only concern I have is there's a hush house they have there for motorcycles revving up to a hundred percent. I've been hearing them at eight-thirty and nine o'clock at night on the event nights. That's all I'm telling you. I don't think that's supposed to happen.
You know, it took me a long time to figure out what the music was, and we live on Pleasant Street, and I thought somebody like at that farmer's home enrolled was having a party, and not that many to talk about, but Greg and I were in the backyard trying to figure out.
You could hear it pretty good.
Yeah, I thought, oh, wow, somebody's having like a band or something, and then it dawned on me that it was the Harley shop. It wasn't, you know, disturbing to me out there, but.
No, but the hush house is.
So I'm gonna skip the town administrator report. I was just gonna keep going. Sometimes, it depends what time it is. Because I have a report too, but.
Just make sure that the public realizes this isn't because I don't have a report to provide.
I'm just moving ahead with all the notes, and then I go backwards.
I have a suggestion. Why can't Heather do a written report and then this way, it can be.
Because Heather spends a lot of time writing my report.
Well.
But she could.
She has a responsibility to be a taxpayer.
It's true. Well, all right, Heather, go. Ready? It's eight-thirty-four. I'll give you six minutes.
Wow, that's a lot. I probably don't need that many. All right, just some additional updates. So as far as resignations go, we also have Robin from the tax collector's office. She's actually departing us and going to a job in another community, which we can announce later once everything's verified. But essentially, her notice has been given, two weeks, and her last date is the fourth. So the treasurer's office is looking at replacing that position. The PCFs will be coming through shortly on that piece. The assessors' office, as far as hiring someone new, my understanding is they've interviewed around candidates. They were looking towards a certain direction, but they might need to do some more. I'm not sure yet. I haven't heard anything. I have no updates. Water department, it looks like they're making progress as far as the water superintendent, but still no updates on that either. As far as other things go, we do have the divisional local services who's been working with us. Everyone remembers a long, long time ago, when I, when one of my first, very first meetings, we, the board actually agreed to have the division of local services come in and help up, provide us technical assistance in some area. And they decided to focus on financial. So what they've been looking at is kind of how we've done our budget process over the period of time, and they've actually already come in, spoken with myself, spoken with the treasurer, spoken with the accountant's office. They're coming back in next Wednesday, and they're going to be speaking with members of the finance committee, a few members of the board of selectmen, either in person or on phone, and a few more members of the. Well, Liz, so far, John by phone, and you, if you got my email, if you're available.
What day is that?
It's next Wednesday. It's on the third.
What is it about?
What time?
I don't remember what time I assigned you. I'd have to go back and look. He's just gonna, he's just gonna discuss about the budget.
Who's this?
The gentleman's name is Richard, or I believe it's Richard Kingsley. He goes by, DLS. DLS is the division of DOR. So Department of Revenue, and then Division of Local Services within Department of Revenue. So he will be in for that, which is kind of exciting.
I don't remember getting an actual time or anything, so.
Because you want to do a phone call?
Right.
I don't have any information from him on that. I'm just gonna give him your phone number, and he's gonna go to town.
Okay, do you know if it'd be morning, afternoon? Because I, I've got meetings, so I've got.
I'm sure we can schedule it. I'm sure, you just give him your email, and you guys can figure it out. But leaving me out of the third-party loop is always.
That's okay.
But I'm, so once they have all the information finished, interviewing everybody, they should be able to actually issue a report, which should actually be very helpful in the way the fact that we're working on our financial plan to be able to put additional information in going forward as to what's worked and what hasn't worked as far as our budget process goes. Other things we worked on last department meeting, we actually worked on time sheets, which are on the agenda somewhere this evening to be looked at and just approved by the board. They actually, we sat down with the departments, department head, and had discussed previously with myself, Don, and Vicky to make sure they were on board with it. We used a template from the Division of Local Services from DOR as what they have for time sheets. The reason we thought it was necessary to look at time sheets again, even though it was just looked at a few years ago, is because people were still creating and modifying the current existing ones, suggesting that they weren't working. If people do that, generally not because they are creative and have nothing better to do and wanna modify the current existing product, but rather it's just not meeting their needs. And we tried to find something more universal. There was one for the salary and for hourly time sheets, so we came up with universal set of those, and those now widely available for everybody. If you saw on the current payroll set, people actually use both.
Slow down a little bit.
You can have some extra minutes.
I was given six minutes.
Go.
As far as tomorrow goes, I'm actually meeting with Don, Patrick, and VJ. We are still working on the website. That has not gone away. We are looking further at WordPress and having it hosted by what most likely will be, I can't think, GoDaddy. I was so afraid I was gonna create something and it wasn't gonna be right. But that's what we're looking at. We have a template we like. We're looking at trying to use the current budget we currently, we already have in place, so we utilize that. As far as this morning, I went to PVPC hosted meeting for the Community Innovative Challenge Grant. I sent everyone an email this afternoon, including all the other departments, committees, commissions that I could think of, with the information on this. Essentially, what happens is it's a very work-intensive planning project to see if you wanna utilize the funds that are available. You can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars. There's a lot of keys to it. Number one, it's regionalization is the key. They wanna see regionalized projects. That's what they're looking at. Number two, it needs to be innovative, something different that hasn't been happening before. You can use things like canned boxed software programs. You just have to use it in a different way. You have to do something unique with it. They wanna see things that are sustainable. They wanna see things that people can repeat. So if you come up with a project, they wanna have it such a key base idea that someone else can go and replicate it in another community. That's what they're looking for. They kind of phrased it as if they're investing into entrepreneurs, so they want. So they wanna see what the ideas are. They're looking for shovel-ready projects. So they want the project already ready to go and start running with it. They don't want you to start with the base of the idea. If we're only at the feasibility study of the project, we can look to DLTA funds from PVPC. That's something that Josh Garcia from PVPC mentioned when he was here last, when we were talking about regionalization of dispatch.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About road projects that are ready to go.
Um, it has to be innovative, so...
Innovative.
We're gonna innovate E Street?
No, this is former road.
Former road, what were we planning to do with former road?
We've been applying for, uh, grants for the last ten years for five-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollars to redo that street.
Well, I can sit with Randall and see what we can come up with, we can always...
I've got all documentation, I left him, it's all ready to go. It's all itemized and estimated.
Well, that's probably gonna be more of a capital project?
Of course.
And the capital projects, I think, are limited at a hundred-and-ninety thousand.
Apply for a hundred-and-ninety thousand.
But what they do, what they do is they do say to apply for everything you need, but what they may do is they may only fund a component of a project. They also said that communities can, because this was one of the concerning questions, communities can apply for numerous projects. So say that on the finance committee, they have this phenomenal idea how to be innovative and reinventive of the whole finance piece. And Conservation Commission has a great idea, and Highway Department has a great idea.
Well, there's another one too. You can do the, the second half for the, uh, park and get the community development built, I mean, the, uh, uh, the bathroom facilities, concession stands, the septic system put in, and the tide area built for about three-hundred thousand dollars. It's all plans are ready to go, it's all on the shelf.
We, we can put, we can try, the problem's gonna be, is it innovative, is this a creative idea? Well, that's...
It's innovative, we can make it very innovative by changing how you wanna deal with the septic.
So we, we can work on it later, but those are great ideas. But I sent out an email to everybody so they can provide feedback. Um, the dispatch meeting that we had talked about a few weeks ago, the regional dispatch idea, we are meeting tomorrow. Um, I did invite both the chiefs to attend, I've sent some numerous reminders, so hopefully they remember. Uh, John Lumbre from the treasurer's office will be present. Um, he did invite other of the smaller communities and towns surrounding. So hopefully we'll have some great folks at the table, and we'll be able to figure out what we are. Again, it's not to make any decisions, and simply just get the ideas on the table and see if we wanna move forward with the feasibility study, hopefully funded by DLTA funds, so it wouldn't cost us anything in the first of the year. And then see what would happen.
Is it open to all the partners?
Absolutely, it's a, it's not a published meeting because we don't have any, um, we don't have any quorums or anyone else attending, but it, you're more than welcome to come, Randall. Uh, ten. But it's not a pub- I just wanna clear up, it's not a public meeting. Um, that being said, I guess I'll still list this under for a little bit later. The public meeting piece? Did you really wanna do that one?
No, I was gonna talk about school, please.
So we did have, um, there were numerous requests from different boards. Um, I've been getting memos all week last weekend, that's probably most of what my paperwork was on my desk if you walked in. Um, and we have had some inquiries from residents as well, and as the last meeting dictated, we had over forty people, give or take, in the audience who were concerned about this. Um, one of the comments that Select Member McDougall had brought up was that we actually should go forward with some kind of public meeting where we did a joint meeting of all boards, committees, and commissions, and also members of the public to have any commentary on this matter. Um, so at this point, I have tentatively scheduled something for September thirtieth at six P.M. I've invited Holyoke to attend so that they can answer any questions that may come up. Hopefully by that time, the initial part of the agreement will at least made progress in Holyoke City Council. And at that point, we'll see where we're going with things, and we'll have a more proposed set of numbers so that we can actually look at things. Because at this point, we only have very sketched-out numbers.
Are you gonna send out a notice to us?
I already did, I sent it out last week when I sent out all the other things.
On September thirtieth?
Yes, it's on a flyer, it's already posted. Um, I've posted on Facebook as well, it made it to Mr. Floyd's newsletter today.
What time?
Um, it is September thirtieth at six P.M., because I wanted to make sure we allocate as much time as possible to that. We, that is a non-board of selectman night. So you'll be meeting three nights in a row that month, I'm sorry, but this way our meeting doesn't go to the end. Well, because it will be...
The ninth, twenty-third, thirtieth.
Twenty-third, thirtieth, and then the first week of October. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna give you a quick report, um, as a liaison to the school committee. I don't know how many of the board of selectmen are aware or not, um, but the transportation budget for the school was cut in the budget, which left a deficit of, uh, forty-six thousand dollars that the school needed to cop with. They cut a bus out of the bus routes, which saved half of that, but there is no way to make up the other half of that money, we're talking about twenty-four thousand dollars, without charging for busing. Um, so by law, you can't charge for busing outside of a two-mile radius of the school, but anyone within the two-mile radius, you can charge. You can't charge anyone that is qualified for free or reduced lunch, school of choice or not, so that those kids are, um, not being charged. It's two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per student to ride the bus with a cap at two students, so four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of discontent with that decision. There are a lot of parents who are not happy about it. But it's happening, and I thought you all should be aware. There's a meeting tomorrow night, where probably the biggest conversation will be transportation, um, at six o'clock, if anybody would like to come with me. Also, there, a parent had, um, I've gotten numerous phone calls about it and emails, and I kind of sent them Heather's way. Um, and she actually directed a parent to, um, the safe routes to school. So as far as the board of selectmen is concerned, we knew that the safe routes to school was happening next year, two thousand and fifteen. What we didn't know was that there was more than that one part of the program. There are actually four other parts of the program that can be utilized. So tomorrow morning, a representative from Safe Routes to School is coming out to survey and evaluate the area, I'm guessing the area within the two miles, to see, um... I don't know, look at it and see what it's all about. I don't know if that means that they'll change their plan, knowing, at, at the point that we gave support, there was not a transportation issue. So they had a set sidewalks that they were going to pave. I don't know if whether them coming out tomorrow and not having busing will change what they choose to do, or add to what they choose to do, or not make any, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, to that is.
I think considering that they've already did all the survey work and laid out the plans on the existing, they will add to it if they can.
If they can.
And they took the most critical, and dealt with that, which was Route ten. And that, um, we walked many other areas with this. So I don't know if this is a new caveat that they put on that we could do after the fact, but myself and Bill Collins walked all the areas that we, we would like to see sidewalk in a, um, like gun road, in the extension of Palmone Meadow, down to East Hampton Line, stuff like that. Now, when they do it, there are other, there's some other programs going in that's going to have sidewalks on it, which... Um, like, uh, Glendale Road from Palmone Meadow, the Route ten's gonna have sidewalks. And that's all within that two mile, two-mile area. And the other areas of stuff on Route ten is gonna add sidewalks. So my, my comment is, um, if they're coming tomorrow, I can't, I gotta be at the hospital. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have afterwards on what we've already got in the works, or Randall can come over with you and deal with that. But...
How many families does this affect?
Um, I wanna, I wanna say like fifty-four is jumping out at me, but I don't know that that is the exact number. There's a lot of information that was flying around at the last school committee meeting. You know, there's a, you have a bus, kids are given bus passes now. Um, and so it should be known that people will not be denied a bus at this point.
Can I ask a question? Are we still sending buses down streets that are opposite the schools to pick up the kids?
I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know that the buses are, I don't know. I don't know the answer to your question. But it, you know, it's a conversation, and...
When will this happen?
It's effective immediately. People had to have had their deposit sent in already.
Is this a letter that went out in...
Everyone that would take a bus, no, the letter did not go out till August.
Really?
July, end of July, beginning of August. Everybody got a letter, you got a letter to go with outside of the two miles, and it said something to the effect of, would you like your child to ride the bus in the morning, in the afternoon, or both, so that they could get a bus count? And you got a separate letter, if you lived within the two miles, that said, we may be imposing a fee. Will your child be riding if there is one, will your child not be riding if there isn't one? That's a very roundabout way of, you know, what the letter said, but, um, and then you needed to respond one way or another.
This two miles, as a crow flies?
I'm pretty sure it's a two-mile radius.
Radius.
Oh, that's a big radius.
Yeah, and so, you know, there's some, there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered and figured out, and a lot of people need to be talked to, but, um, so that's that. The other part of that came from school committee is, in, in the past, and I talked to Heather about this today, so we're not exactly sure about the numbers, money has come back from school budgets into town free cash. And one of the issues that they brought up, according to their figures, is that this year, eleven thousand dollars will be coming back to free cash. Um, and I don't know that those numbers are true. I think there's some, some differ- differentiation between what the school is coming up with and what the town actually thinks. But what they will probably request is that eleven thousand dollars go back into their transportation line item.
This is regional?
No, this is Norris. The Norris money that they would return, they will request that the town give it back to them to be applied to their transportation budget. Um, so just a heads up that that's where that conversation will be headed. And that's it for that. Yes, sir.
Amy Broder, one sixty-two Federal Highway. I'm sitting here very patiently, hoping that there's still citizens speak time to these meetings.
I did not get to open time to the public, but I will call it right now, open time to the public.
I just sent an email on Sunday regarding an issue of the pavilion, uh, being haunted by me on Sunday. Uh, there's no toilet, no toilet paper, no paper towels, floor's not swept, trash in there, um, that I had to attend to before I had my fit in there on Sunday. And I'm wondering if the people who attended, the day before I did, got their deposit back. And if the construct's on lines, the night is a town function, and the bathrooms are open? Um, who's responsible for supplying those? You're renting buildings with public bathrooms, and they could not be used until I went and got supplies.
I asked the same question this morning when I was in here, who was responsible for keeping those bathrooms clean and stocked? And I don't know that, I don't know that...
I talked to, I talked to Paul Matt, and she said, I'm not gonna do it, I don't pay for it. So...
Well, routinely, the Highway Department went over there. If there was two functions back-to-back, they would go over and clean up the trash. And, uh, that was a standard procedure.
I'm not talking in trash from the day.
I'm talking about toilet paper, they would be cleaned and flushed out with a hose, there's a hose over there for it. And the pavilion floor would be flushed out, fireplace would be empty of any ashes and stuff like that. And I don't know what's going on there now, but that was done before. Randall, what's going on with it?
Um, I had had a conversation with the Parks Department as to whether they wanted us to keep going over there on the weekends, which we had done that in the past, and they did not want to continue paying us to go over there on the weekends, because we have a three-hour minimum, and that's pretty much where we left it.
Well...
They had changed their policy.
Did you, did you have a discussion of what's involved? I mean, just walking away for something that was always done, these people are paying a couple hundred dollars to use it. But it was supposed to have been a wash, um, with people going over there. And I know you're new to it, but that was always done, that was always part of the job. That was always part of the job, I'm just telling you.
A lot of things were better.
I'm just telling you, it was, it was, there's a fee that has always been paid, uh, it was never an issue. Uh, the money from that pavilion was to offset those fees and come out of the park. That's why the fee structure was stuck in there to begin with, was to clean those things after an event and pick up the trash. I'm just telling you, what was been going on ever since I...
I just like to, I'd like to say, that's a great little spot. I think it's worth more than a hundred dollars, which is all it costs me to rent for the day. And I paid the fifty-dollar deposit. So if it wasn't the way it was supposed to be when I left, I didn't get that back. Well, somebody didn't leave it the way it was supposed to be, and they got that back.
I'll be honest with you, I apologize for that. Uh, I don't think there was a, a, a problem on Randall's fault, he was just doing it.
No, no, I don't, I don't think so.
But I think the board, the board, uh, Parks Commission didn't realize what's involved in there when you don't do it. There's a lot of other things that happened, the animals get in that trash, run it all over the park, and, uh, I've been there. And that's why there was a fee established for that pavilion. It was part of a rolling cost to take care of whatever it costs to clean that up at each party. And that's what that fee was about. Out of towners pay a lot more. I don't know if it's two fifty.
It's two, two and a quarter, two fifty at East Hampton Park, and this is a hundred. So they could go up on their fees, and I still pay it, because you're the only one there, that's what's nice about it. Um, but it's, um, I talked to Paula, she's gonna get my deposit back, but it's still in my email, and I don't know if you all got a copy of that. I was looking for another twenty-five dollars back for me doing somebody else's job.
I doubt that's gonna happen, but that's up to them.
Well, I, it's, uh, it's to get people to think.
Parks Commission gets the money, right?
There's a revolving fund set up on the pavilion. You take care of that cost. I don't think he's aware of it, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm aware of it, and from what I've heard, the Parks Department doesn't want us touching the revolving fund, the pavilion, that's where...
That's why it was set up. So somebody's gonna have to have a talk with them, because it was, it was, it's a nightmare if it's not cleaned up. We have two back-to-back parties, and I've sent you over there when you, when I was in charge, and you know what happens if it doesn't get cleaned up. And it, they, you know, there's certain things they can cut, and certain things they can't. But when people are paying for these things, Randall, I have an issue with it.
And I just wanted to make it clear, it wasn't five bags of trash from the event before, it was the bathroom trash.
No, they're supposed to lock the stuff up in the bathroom.
There could be some pretty nasty stuff in the bathroom trash.
Yeah, I know.
Um, and that was, that was what was there, not big, huge bags.
So the money that gets paid, that goes to Parks Department? So he was requesting twenty-five dollars to reimburse himself, because you had to go out and buy...
I had to go buy toilet paper, paper towels, I swept the floor, and I emptied the trash. And, um, there was a couple of eight-foot branches that had fallen down, and something just tossed them into the wood chips on the edge of the parking lot, it looked like crap, and I got rid of those two.
Can I give you a key?
Yes.
Who gave you the key?
The police department. And when I went to put the key in the bathroom door, I pushed down the door, and the door opened. So it's obvious nobody checked that facility after the Saturday event, or they went from the door wide open.
So I guess, I'm not opposed to you getting extra twenty-five dollars for having to do that after work and buying your own supplies. I, I don't know if the board of selectmen can write a letter of support for that and give it to the Parks Commission and let them make their own choices.
I have no problem talking to Mark, I'll talk to Mark tomorrow, because I think it's just a misunderstanding. This is something, this is something that, um, they're getting paid for, and it was always intended to be a wash. Okay, go ahead, Randall.
Just a couple more things. We're still going there Monday mornings and picking up all the trash in the weekend. And I know I had conversations with the Parks Department, um, when we originally talked about it, they were changing their policy, packing and packing out, so they would be responsible for their own trash. We had at least one instance where I had an email from somebody saying that the person before them left their trash. I forwarded to the Parks Department, and the response was that we don't know who's leaving the trash. So this is the problem we're running into. Um, I have one more thing I wanted to mention. It slipped my mind. Oh, and that's the other thing, they didn't wanna leave toilet paper there because the animals eat it? I've heard that.
Randall, I've been, I've been taking care of that pavilion, I rebuilt that pavilion. We have bats there that hide under shingles, but they're not eating the toilet paper. Uh, if anything, the problems I've seen with that is when the functions are going on, those little kids get in there, they take the rolls of paper, and they throw them in the toilet bowl, they play their little games, and they throw them outside, and it's just something you gotta pick up. But they're, they're, they shouldn't be in that middle room, that's where all the supplies are. But I'm not doubting that somebody's eaten them, but... But I'm not doubting you that somebody's eaten them, but I didn't ever had that problem.
I, I looked in the middle room, even though it said, you're not supposed to go in there, because I thought there might be supplies in there, but.
Yeah, usually they, they're, they, we keep supplies in there. But I don't know how it is now.
So is it, just for clarification, is the highway's the park, highway department's job to make sure that it's stocked and cleaned?
Let me, let me back it up, Randall. You are the land, the, the park superintendent. You, that's your type. If you look at the job description, you are the park superintendent. You work under the Parks Department, but this is part of your duties. Okay? And to keep that building secure, you winterize it in the winter, you open it up in the fall, I mean, in the spring. But, you know, that's stocked, and we've always done that. Somebody's gonna talk to Mark and, and the board and say, hey, people, we're paying for these things, and that's why we instituted a fee. Because somebody would have to go over there, take the trash out. So if another party was coming in, say, the next day, they weren't dealing with a bathroom full of trash bags and no toilet paper. Somebody would go in there, wash those floors out, and wash the pavilion floor out, because these people are entitled to have a clean building when they go in it. They paid for it, they expect it. And that's why we did it. Now, to cut it, it, it might be a cost break item, but the point is, it's a service we're providing. It's not a moneymaker. You know, they're not taking a hundred dollars and throwing it in there. And that's what that fee was established for. If they left the place a mess, the town would get the additional seventy five dollars. You know what I'm saying? And out of towners would come in, I think it's two fifty. Okay? But in the long run, I think it was like eighteen hundred dollars a year they came in for revenue. And that was always supposed to be a wash, always. Now, they don't want to do it, then I'm just telling you, things have changed greatly.
I was told by Paul Matt that I went to mowing and upkeep of the property.
I'm just telling you, what it was established for, because I was involved in establishing it years ago, it was to keep the place in an orderly fashion when somebody came in there. And you pick up the trash. Uh, if there was a party Friday night, you bring it to the dump Saturday morning and you clean it up. But I don't expect you to know all that, but you are the park superintendent, it's part of your job. And these things, that's why you get lists of, of who's going in and who's going out. It's, and I, I think Mark didn't realize that this was a in and out type of thing. It was, it was to take care of the cost, to take care of that building when there was a function. It wasn't supposed to be for making money. They want to make money, they better double the price. You know? But, uh, that's how it was set up, and I don't know what to tell you, I don't know why they did that.
I appreciate the letter, because otherwise we wouldn't have known. It could have happened to someone and they would not have told us. So, thank you.
Well, I mean, the, the people, the people there on Saturday must have found that there was no toilet paper in it.
Well, if this has been going on from the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
And, and everybody's been dealing with it.
Right, and they, you, you guys have a public, you invite the public there, it wins the nicer answer. And they're open.
Right, and you always set that up, make sure it's clean and ready to go. Uh.
I'm not blaming you, I'm just, you know, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault.
Wow. There's a, there, there, there was a misunderstanding.
I was, I was involved in the, in the decision. We have to, we have to cut things, that's, that you can't, you can't do everything.
Randall, I'm telling you something, you just don't, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude about it, but you just don't turn your back in a situation. How's it gonna resolve itself? Okay? I mean, it's, it's something that has to be done, and the money was there to take care of it. All right? It's always a wash. And somebody would go over there, granted, uh, if it's during the week, you got cover. If it, it's not during the week, it's in overtime. But we took care of it for many years that way, it was a wash. The money would come out of that, that fund.
So maybe it's time to rethink?
I, I just think that you can't ignore it.
The cost of the pavilion in order to cost, in o, in order to cover the cost of toilet paper and the upkeep of the pavilion. So if you could talk to Mark Reed about refunding Mr. Broder his money and.
Oh, I should have talked to him.
Right, and Randall, maybe we need to have a conversation with Randall and the Parks Commission and us or whoever to, to kind of talk about how we're gonna fix this problem. Because although I know we need to cut things, you can't rent something out to people and not have it nice for them. So let's resolve it in a group conversation.
Okay, I, I just, my understanding, we're making it more of a, if you give them the facility and aid for this stuff here. If it's, if it's a rarity in portable, we have.
That, that wasn't on the permit with all the rest of the things I had to do. And I even got a phone call from her. I rented it in March, March tenth, as a matter of fact, it was on the permit. She called me in June and said, uh, there's been a change in policy, you now have to haul your own trash out. Before, you would leave it in the bathroom, and they will take care of it the next day. So she called me and made a special phone call that that was not my responsibility. That's not a good deal, I did that, my trash is gone. Um, but.
What the other trash was there?
The, the bathroom trash was still there.
Well, we will work this situation out and.
I guess it's a great spot, you know, it's a side of all, of two problems, it's a grateful town. And I think you got, you know, a lot of good going on despite all the glitches and things. But it's just, you know, I wasn't prepared to do that when I showed up on Sunday morning, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, but you have anything for your.
I do, I do. I've been patiently waiting too. Uh, the first thing that I have to ask a question, Heather made a report. She spoke very fast, so if I'm in here or something, does she cover? Um, what was the, you went to the.
I emailed you, so you have it on your email. I emailed you personally, you're one of the emails. The CIC?
Why?
Yeah, you already have it in your inbox.
How many decades?
Uh, five fifteen, five thirty. So you have it.
All right, but, but, but you said something that there was two components to the CIC, that the Holyoke people are talking to us about buildings.
No, that has nothing to do with.
Okay, so this is separate?
Nothing to do with.
Okay, so I thought it was, I thought it was a combined.
No.
Meeting, so this was highly new.
No, this is just CIC.
Okay. Um, the other thing that joined you, may I have the intention of the other members?
Sorry.
I'm just researching something, okay? Do you mind?
Okay, if you want me to stop, and then?
I can hear two, I, I've been multitasking a lot.
Okay. During public meeting with other boards, Heather reported that she's tentatively scheduled it for September thirtieth, and danced the proposal, um.
From Holyoke.
Pardon me?
That's a proposal from Holyoke, for the building department.
So, um, that, that, the submission of that grant by Holyoke, when is it due?
There's not a submission of a grant by Holyoke. That, that has nothing to do with a grant, you're getting confused with the dispatch. Dispatch is something entirely different that has to do with the DLTA funds that PVPC had pronounced last time they were here. I know there's a lot of regionalization conversation going on between the CIC, the DLTA, and Holyoke. They're not all related.
But that's not.
They're three separate things. CIC is just Community Innovative Challenge Grant, which I emailed everybody on today. That's something we can apply to, they have a focus of regionalization, that's what they like to give money towards.
Okay.
The second idea is the Holyoke Building Department, with working with them to supply for us some folks. That does not include our administrative assistant in the Board of Health slash Building Department, she would stay regardless. So at that point, we were still working and negotiating, that's what the public meeting is for on September thirtieth, that's six P M. in this office. Um, as far as the third thing goes, dispatch, that's something we're working on the side. And that's just an idea of exploratory, to figure out if it's something that might work out in the future for combining services amongst different communities around in the region for our dispatch services. If we were to look at funding, we might be looking at DLTA funding, which is provided through the PVPC, and that would be for the purpose of doing a feasibility study to see if this is a prospect that we'd want to pursue. So it would require no commitment from us, other than to move forward with putting the paperwork together for the feasibility study for January and getting the DLTA funds from PVPC, and then at that point, seeing where the cards fall.
And not Holyoke.
That, that's with Holyoke as one of the players. But no, none of those three things are related.
So what was the discussion that took place, that you were trying to get a pilot program or sort of a test run to see how it would work out?
That's our regionalizing, the electrical plumbing and building inspector with Holyoke.
Okay.
It's not a contractor, it's just a, let's try it out.
It's an inter municipal agreement.
Pilot program, some, let's see what happens.
So there's no deadline about that in terms of when it was gonna be done? Because the, the several was mentioned as a date.
There's no deadline for that, that's something that we need to agree upon, numbers and hours and people, and that's something that we have to work out between the two.
Wouldn't that mean when the grant would be available?
A grant is not available until January of two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, but that's not related to the grants.
Um, the other question I had was, um, in terms of the open time to the public, I know that David McDouble said that he welcomes having people join the meetings on a regular basis to be informed, and that, you know, there's only certain surges that occur when there's a hot topic. But, um, is it, it's very hard to plan to be here for any specific time because even if you have open time, it's, it's so far down in the agenda. And the first part of this agenda took an hour and a half, which I'm sure you guys didn't even think that it was gonna take that long. So, going back to how it was in terms of the time slot, so people want to come in for a specific.
No.
No.
Why is that?
Never again. It's very, it's, one thing that I really like about not having a time on here is, I like to be able to switch, I mean, I have, I waited for open time for the public till the end tonight, because I knew that people are sitting here. But generally, I would say as often as I can, if I see somebody who doesn't have, or I caught their ear before and said, are you here for something specific, we jump ahead. If you put times on there, I can't jump ahead like that. You have to stop and wait until seven forty, or seven forty-five, or eight fifteen. Whereas when it's like this, we can just go wherever we need to go to get people out as they come in.
Well, you can take some things out of order and record it as having been done.
But what if somebody wanted to come in to talk about it and you went out of order?
I'm talking about, like, for instance, on the, um, the Warrens. How often do people come in and talk about the Warrens?
They don't, but I often leave them till the end when people are gone.
Well, it's just, you know, it's just that it's very difficult to try kind of, if you really just want to come in for a specific, or want to be available at a specific time. Because I know the seniors, for example, and we're on the agenda, they would accommodate us early on so that we wouldn't, so we wouldn't be out.
One, if anybody needs a specific, if they want to be in and out, they can say, can you put me on as early as possible? And we'll do that. The other thing I recommend to constituents is if they call me ahead of time because they're concerned about something, generally, I'm pretty good, Paul will attest to this, at guestimating the approximate amount of time something is going to take. So based on the agenda, since I prepare it every single week or every other week, I can generally tell you exactly, within about a fifteen minute margin, what time that item's gonna be on. So the re, the problem with times is that you're held to them and you have to strictly, strictly stick to them. So if you have some for eight thirty, but we're done at seven, we're stuck. And we're here till nine o'clock at night, because there's an item on for eight thirty. What the board may wish to consider at some point is coming up with a strict time limit for open time for the public and saying maybe fifteen minutes every meeting, first item on the agenda is open time for the public, but limiting it so that they don't lose their whole meeting to open time for the public.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate that, that's fine. Um, moving on, the next question I have is that, uh, the select board meetings are, you're meeting in September twice a month, not even at the thirty, but are you, are we sticking to that as a regular schedule? Because even if you took summer schedule, I mean, every two weeks, why would you continue with as many things that are going on?
I think we were, I think the conversation I had with Heather was, let's get through September, and then we're gonna start budget conversations much earlier, and we're gonna have to start meeting every week again. As, it's always been my, my opinion that we should meet every week other than the summer, and then cancel when needed. But, I mean, you're right, there is a lot of stuff.
Budget season is really next month, so we're gonna have to get a jump.
Right, so I, you know, I think this every other week in September, and then October starts up again, and you cancel as you need to go.
But the thing to keep in mind too is, even though it seems like it's a very busy meeting as it is, if we had a meeting last week, it would have been ten minutes, because I had nothing on the agenda.
That's right, so you cancel it.
It, you know, every, things tend to come in cycles. And, you know, generally, what we try to do is, we try to get ahead of things as much as possible. So that we prep out, you know, if we know we're meeting every two weeks, I prep things so they're ready for that two weeks. They meet, they won't be, I can assure you, some things won't be ready in a week, because you have to go through the cycle, you have to go through P P D approval and Finance Committee approval. So when I have paperwork flowing, it's easier sometimes to just say the two weeks is good, because that way you don't miss it. And it's easier, people think that having a meeting.
It's a fluid conversation, Nilda.
People think having a meeting every week is more helpful, but it's actually more burdensome on the paperwork side, because it's another agenda to prepare, it's another set of minutes to do, it's another set of documents to dock it, where if you do it all at once, it actually goes much faster.
Throwing an extra meeting, make it three a month, this kind of solves the problem, do what you need to.
Don't worry, we'll let you know.
Three meetings, three meetings a month with one?
Well, three, if you have every other week and you need a third one, we just throw it in like that.
All the time. All right, well, that was the, that was the two points, and, um, everything else, you know, was covered. With our report or whatever people ask. I'm going home, thank you.
Thank you.
Six one.
Oh, I know where we are.
Okay.
So this next, um, action item is about unregistered vehicles. We received a letter from our health agent, Bree Eichstat, with concerns regarding a property on Russellville Road that has numerous unregistered vehicles. Car dealer laws under chapter one forty, section fifty-nine of MGLs prohibit the keeping of more than one unregistered motor vehicle on the premises at any given time unless they are stored in an enclosed building. In accordance with Town Bylaws, section ten, article ten, ten? Section two, which allows for a special permit to be issued to such an owner if such criteria are met upon application to the Board of Selectmen. Article ten, section five reads that any violations of these provisions shall allow, shall allow the penalty of ten dollars per day after ten days of receipt of a notice from the Board of Selectmen noting the violation. So I would recommend that we draft a letter to be sent, um, ultimately giving them, the owner of this property, two options, either A, apply for the permit, or B, after ten days, we start finding them.
Russellville?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a specific instance that's bringing this up, or do we have a lot of them around town? Is that the idea?
In your packet, there's a bunch of pictures.
I just want to make sure this is not being confused with the houses up from Russellville and Homer. That's in court already.
That's a very good point.
Thank you.
Okay. No, it's not.
It's yet again another property.
So rather than put it off, I think we should notify that there's a problem and move on.
Let's know all minor registers.
I often wonder that when I drive by.
Now, can I ask a question? Is the Board of Health doing this because we have nobody enforcing the bylaws? Which would normally be.
I get a call for the property for complaint.
Yeah.
Not health complaint.
Well, it was concerns.
I know, but I think that would be a, that would be a time, yeah, that'd be a time for the building inspector and enforcement officer.
Liz, can I, okay.
Go, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, speaking of the building, um, the building inspector.
Just wait, does that have to do with this? Can we finish this?
Well, that's why I was gonna hold on.
Okay, thanks.
I can hold.
So is there any, anybody else want to talk about this? What do you want to do?
Send the letter.
Okay, so I would take a motion to draft a letter. Um, draft a letter telling them they need to apply for a permit.
Or the fines.
Yeah.
We'll start.
And I don't think the option of saying, I'm gonna apply for a permit, should get them by the ten days, because.
No, it's if the permit's not received within, if the application's not received.
Okay.
Right.
How many vehicles in one, three?
Numerous. Uh, between three and five vehicles.
So do I have a motion?
Motion. Is that good?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Just my side note that I forgot on my report, I apologize, I was going so quick, I forgot a comment. I spoke with Paul Haley tonight. Um, he is getting, um, very worn out with doing his job and this job and any additional work he does on the side. He asked if I can find an alternative to this, um, working situation until we resolve what we're doing with Holyoke. Um, I had actually previously spoken with Holyoke. We do have one option, which is we can always pursue Damian and see, as he's the building commissioner there, if he'd be willing to take on the, be appointed as the interim over here at the meantime, and actually take on the same fee rate as Paul is currently having, which is thirty-five per inspection. Um, or the other option is, I know Rich is back in town, we can see if Rich would be interested in perhaps.
If anything for six months.
Oh, never mind.
That's, I mean, that's the bylaw. I mean, that's the time.
No, you're right, you can't. So that's.
He can't come back?
Not for six months.
Not for six months. Is that full employment or part-time?
No, I, I'm not sure, because.
Let me, let me look into that.
When I talked to the ethics board, they said you could.
Retired, I mean, again, I work for state, retired, and come back, that's the difference between what you retire at and what the full salary is. Like, if you retire at eighty percent, you can come back for twenty percent of that.
Let me, let me find out, but.
Well, I've, I've hired some back, so.
I just wanna give the boards a heads up that I will be putting something before you on the next agenda that asks for an appointment of someone interim, because I promised Paul we'd find some resolution, so the ninth would be his last day, so he could re, resort to his regular life.
Can't blame him.
Um, so then we have the approval of fiscal sixteen vacation time and leftover fiscal fifteen vacation time for Ruth Bernier, who's leaving. So given the bylaws, the way that they are now, she's entitled to vacation time for fiscal sixteen, which hasn't happened yet, and the rest of fiscal fifteen.
Yes, and those.
It's prorated.
Yes, so those numbers, those numbers are as follows. So she currently has seventy-five hours left of vacation pay that we'll be paying her out at, and she also has sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, and we'll be paying her out for F Y sixteen vacation pay. Um, so for, did you keep, I, I don't know, our numbers, they were, sorry, they were slightly different. I can't tell you what they are. Oh, yes, I can, actually. It's, uh, twelve hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for F Y fifteen vacation pay that we'll be paying out, F Y sixteen pay, because remember, it's a vest of the first year, you don't take it till year two, um, that was hanging out there, and that is going to be sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So I need a motion to approve the vacation and leftover payout of vacation time.
Make a motion to approve Ruth Bernier's vacation and leftover, uh, vacation for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We next, um, have, we, we need to talk about a public hearing date for the transfer of charter to Comcast, Comcast. So several weeks ago, we heard from Comcast about the information, um, on the process of transferring services from charter to Comcast. And the Mass Code of Regulations requires us to hold a public hearing on the transfer, as well, based on four criteria, managerial, technical, financial, and legal ability of charter to take over for Comcast. The Mass Department of Telecommunications and Cable has granted us an extension beyond August eighteenth, which was the deadline. The average time for these hearings has been running for about fifteen minutes. We have to advertise it for two weeks. Um, we have a busy, busy meeting on the ninth, and that's also too soon, so we could be ready on the twenty-third if Comcast is available to attend that day.
They are available to attend that day.
Are there any objections?
No.
And just one correction, um, it's probably how I wrote it, but it's charter to Comcast, so we're switching over to Comcast. There was one time in the middle that you said from Comcast to charter, I was like, there's so many fees that.
I think I'm just looking forward to it, because I'm tired of everybody not being able to. Um, so then we need to talk about the weights and measures fee schedule. In the past, the Board of Selectmen voted to go with the state for providing weights and measures services beginning this year. Um, there were three options. We chose the third. It allowed us to keep some of the fee. It was cheaper in the long run, um, but we don't currently have an approved weights and measures fee. This one has been reviewed by the state and is recommended to us for approval.
Is there any change, Heather, from currently?
No.
So there's no change.
Well, from what currently you mean, what I sent to the packet, we don't have anything currently.
Well, what were we, well, Northham in charge for the fees last year, but they kept them on, right?
Yes, but we never got involved with the fee process.
Right.
And now we're able to keep some and be involved in the process. So I would accept a motion to accept the weights and measures fee schedule as approved by the state.
I move to accept the, uh, fees schedule approved by the state.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next issue is revised time sheets. The town administrator, treasurer, and accountant, Heather talked about this earlier, noticed a lot of variations in the last versions of the time sheet that were rolled out over a year or so ago. The current proposed version is a division of, is a division of local services template that has a few modifications that were reviewed by almost all department heads at the last department head meeting. There are two forms, one for salary employees and one for hourly employees. Salary employee one has a few less details, taking out the hour in, hour out times, and just asking for a total number of hours each day. Both sheets ask for holiday time, vacation time, sick time. Um, these sheets are available on a shared drive and have been emailed to all department heads. They were used last payroll, so you can see them in the payroll folder. The P Q B has also approved them. Um, and I think in order to make sure that all department heads are using these, it would be beneficial for the Board of Selectmen to show their support also and approve them as they knew need to be used by all department heads, all departments.
I think the only, the only exceptions we came up with when I talked to the treasurer's office was the actual, um, the highway department, they wanted the individual workers to continue with what they had, because theirs is a little more tricky, since they charge from different accounts. So they wanted to do it that way, um.
But it contains all the relative, relevant information, right?
Yes, and I think that was the only one, because they said, they mentioned the police, but they said as far as the police goes, I believe they just photocopy them, so they can use whatever sheet we make available. And we haven't changed any of the cover sheets, so they had no objections with those.
Do we have any issues with any departments or department heads, other than what you, I mean, that are gonna use them? Because we used to have problems with a couple of department heads saying, no, I don't wanna use them.
Um, not everyone used them this time, so once the board approves, I'll send out a memo to let everyone know these are the official approved time sheets to be utilized.
If not, we'll address it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So could you please make sure that you say the Board of Selectmen has approved and would really appreciate your compliance with this?
Well, do we wanna appreciate or saying that they need to use it?
Here you go.
Well, I was gonna try and be nice the first time around, but I guess we can say you have to use it. Um.
Ask a question. Heather, is there anything on the agenda for down the road of going electronic, the time slips?
Um, well, we use, um, most departments use them on Excel for the time being.
No, I mean, actually going in, filling electronically, submitted electronically with a electronic approval, well, that's probably too far down the road, huh?
There might be a few steps behind some of the folks who currently are, if we come up with an easier program maybe, but right now, we still have a lot of, um, departments who, where there's lots of employees, they'll actually handwrite their sheets.
It's on the wish list way in the future.
Yes.
Well, that's the end of that. I'm gonna go back to the approval of minutes, so if you can go into your packets, please. I know I said we were gonna skip this, but we're going back.
I review it.
I do too. It's the, see?
Oh. Um, so I would accept a motion to approve these minutes that are listed on your agenda for January twenty-eighth. These are all executive session minutes, and it should be noted that executive session minutes can be approved in open session as long as the topic of the executive session minutes are no longer relevant to being in executive session. Is that true?
You changed a few words.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't even look at your paper.
That they're no longer privileged or protected material.
Thank you.
So in other words, the purpose of having the executive session is no longer implied, right?
Right, that's what I was trying to say. So I would accept a motion to accept the minutes from January twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, April twenty-ninth, twenty fourteen, May twenty-seventh, twenty fourteen, June tenth, twenty fourteen, and June seventeenth, twenty fourteen.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question. Do you have to have, did you have to be at the meeting?
No, as we discussed the last time, you do not.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you pass this down to John?
John, one sec.
Well, he does, because he's the clerk. He wants to put his Hancock on them, the very end of them.
And then, do we need to move into, oh, wait a minute.
If you want to approve those tonight.
Our next, uh, select board meeting is September ninth, and that's our meeting on the twenty-third, and a meeting on the thirtieth at six o'clock. Thirtieth is at six o'clock. All others are at six thirty. Um, we have a performance review on September ninth for the town administrators, so if you need a pack, if you need a paper to fill out, anybody need one?
Passed it on last meeting.
Yeah.
Very heavy.
You have one?
No.
I, I will be very disappointed if people come unprepared, because we've had, all had plenty of warning.
This is my first warning.
Oh, no, I know.
This is my first warning.
You've had plenty of warnings.
This is my first one.
This is plenty of warning. Um, and the highway superintendent on October seventh, so if anybody.
But he's on the twenty-third.
Oh, on September twenty-third, so if anybody would like to talk to the highway superintendent, or anyone that works with him, or you would like to discuss it, he's in the back of the room and is always available, and at the end of the phone. And October seventh is with the police chief, also available by phone when you call, so. Um, the public hearing is set for August tw- what, what's that?
That's a Comcast one.
That's, oh, I'm sorry. September twenty-third, that's September, not August.
I did have my assistant proofread.
So that's all set. We're also, need to set up a special town, date for special town meeting in the fall, but we're waiting for free cash to be certified, so we can't do that until then.
Do we get any preliminary numbers?
I don't believe we have any preliminary.
My best guess is still that we're going to pick our hundred thousand, we had last year floating, and have a hundred thousand for this year floating, and miraculously, we'll have two hundred thousand, so.
I do think at some point, we should talk about any requests that come in at, you know, town meeting, and the, the stance of the board on if they choose to spend any, or none, or all, or conversation.
Um, one question.
You're gonna get a whole bunch of requests for stuff.
One question I have on that, and you can have, um, I know John and I, and I think we've all talked about this sometimes, we start looking at the financial picture of each budget, you know, they are appeared, are, year, and I think at the end of this quarter, I think we should be all.
Yeah, I look at it every month, and so far, there's a couple of things that are way off, but it's because you're prepaying software, you're prepaying something, but the rest of them are pretty close. We just gotta revise one this week, so I, pay attention to that.
Well, we got to be in this September, I'm saying.
Do you wanna send up in the first meeting in October, a review of the current budget?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's great, but I also think we should look at it every month.
I mean, I like to have it. I mean, I haven't seen them. I like to see last year's too, even the last year's, if that's been totaled.
Um, and now, do we need to go into executive session, or can we resume?
You can put it off till next time. They're executive session, they're not going to be released.
So we will, uh, it's any, are there any, uh, anyone disagree if we move the executive session minutes approval to next time? At that point, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.